All right, welcome everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Terry, can you please confirm that we're in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And if you could please call the roll.
Commissioner Becca.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordine.
Here.
Commissioner Zer.
Here.
At this time, we'll move to our pledge of allegiance. It is a pleasure to introduce North Star 7th grade student Bodie Osborne tonight. Bodie is an alumni of our Chippewa Valley Montessori School. Bodie is an excellent student and highly involved in North Star Athletics, after-school clubs, and co-curricular programs. Bodie has participated in soccer, tennis, column club, book and movie club, choir, student council, and was recently the lead character in the school, the North Star School play, A Bullies Ballad. Bodie was one of 10 North Star students who spoke with Governor Evers on behalf of student leadership at North Star, uh, North Star Student Leadership Organizations just a couple of weeks ago. Outside of school, Bodie enjoys many activities, including mountain biking, gardening, drawing, snowboarding, camping, and swimming. That is a lot of activities. When asked about his future career, Bodie is still undecided. This is a good thing to be as a 7th grader, but thinks about becoming a park ranger, farmer, or marine biologist. We all applaud Bodie for the way he handles himself in his classes and activities to make North Star a better school for all students. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join Bodie in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, democracy, and justice for all.
Thank you, Bodie.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, and opposed, the agenda is adopted. We'll now move on to our recognitions for the, tonight. We have three recognitions, and I'll turn it over as usual to Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Nordine, board members, student reps, and distinguished guests. We've got three this evening, and I think we'll take the pictures after all three are complete. Our first recognition this evening is for a distinguished Eau Claire Area School District alumnus, Christian Phelps. Christian is a Memorial graduate and is the Wisconsin Public Education Network's digital organizer, helping broaden and deepen partnerships across the state through both relational and digital organizing strategies. He has previously worked in public education and multimedia journalism. Wisconsin Public Education Network is an informal, non-partisan alliance of parents, educators, board members, administrators, school districts, and groups all over the state who are committed to ensuring the public schools have the resources and support they need, so every child at every public school has equal access and opportunity to learn and succeed in the classroom and beyond. Our public schools are the heart of our communities, and a thriving democracy depends on their success. Christian has been a tremendous supporter and leader here in the Chippewa Valley, and of course statewide. Because of the leadership of Christian and Chris Hambuch Boyle, we are hosting the 8th Annual WPEN Summer Summit at Eau Claire North High School on July 21st. We're excited for over 30 world-class interactive sessions with experts and experienced advocates from around Wisconsin and the US on our theme, Public Schools Unite Us. This theme gives us an opportunity to discuss how we could come together to meet the needs of all learners and unite to develop strategies for dealing with the challenges and obstacles we face.
So in addition to all of the work that Christian is doing for WPEN, who has partnered with Eau Claire on so many occasions for advocacy, and again, bringing the summer summit to Eau Claire this summer, a few days ago, Christian published in The Leader Telegram and As I See It piece. The board read that piece and thought that it really spoke to the values that we have talked about and we have endorsed here in the district. So we have invited Christian here today to not only receive the recognition, but also to share that letter with all of us. So Christian, if you'd come forward to the podium here, the floor is yours, and then we'll of course applaud you, and then we'll move on to our other recognitions. Thank you for being here, Christian.
Bearing with my close, but still okay, time management. So, the column that I wrote that was published on Friday, I'll just read it, and then we can talk or not afterwards. So, "Students in our public schools won't get a do-over at being kids. They're kids now, and they can hear what we've been saying about them. Over the course of our spring election cycle, particularly in school board races, but also elsewhere, we exposed Eau Claire area kids to some dangerous and disgraceful conversations, and it has left a wound we must heal. We have a moral responsibility to build and defend a public education system in which every student thrives, one built on community and dignity, that values educators and supports them as they continually improve their craft, and that closes the shameful opportunity gaps facing students of color, students in poverty, students with disabilities, LGBTQ plus students, and others. But overshadowing any good faith conversations about how to achieve this, LGBTQ plus students in our community have watched adults debate whether they should feel safe to confide in their teachers. They have seen and heard arguments over the legitimacy of their identities. While political actors and media outlets propelled those arguments to a national platform, they have been squeezed into the middle of petty squabbles about their very humanity. I hope they know they're not alone. It's time for a serious collective reflection on how we talk about students, families, and public schools. Every time adults bicker over transgender students' right to be themselves as they learn and play, or any queer students' right to build trusting relationships with their peers and their teachers, we send a harrowing message to those kids: Your freedom is up for debate. Bad policies have consequences. For example, state-imposed spending caps leave many Eau Claire students without the resources they need and place an unfair burden on local taxpayers who are already struggling through no fault of the districts. Testing requirements take instructional time away from teachers, and if educators were forced to disclose a student's private information, LGBTQ students would feel unsafe to confide in them. That is undeniable. But here's a less tangible, equally serious truth: Kids are always assessing their own safety before, during, and after policy changes take place. I know because I was a queer student in Eau Claire's public schools 10 years ago. As a teenager, I remember silently but diligently keeping tabs on countless conversations around me on national TV and in the halls of my school and everywhere in between about gay rights. When I was in middle school, Wisconsin voters decisively passed a referendum banning same-sex marriage and civil unions. When I was in high school, that ban was upheld in court. The policy didn't immediately affect me. I was a kid, I wasn't trying to get married, but the culture surrounding it did. I wondered why my identity was so frequently and flippantly tossed back and forth like a political football. And I had it easy. I was the child of educators and enjoyed the support of my family and teachers. I was not transgender, I was not a student of color, I wasn't in poverty, but I still remember that with decades of life, of life ahead of me, I wasn't sure who I could trust. Today's LGBTQ kids are growing up into a beautiful community of people that I know well, but it's one that continues to struggle from generations of discrimination and far too often, as I know from personal experience with people that I know, family rejection. Homelessness, addiction, depression, and suicide rates are consistently higher among queer youth and adults than their straight counterparts. Take a moment to imagine that your identity is a regular topic of Pew Research polls. Find a recent news stories about trans kids or adults and put a descriptive, your own, in place of what's there. Imagine prominent national commentators arguing daily about whether you are who you say you are, and teachers, whether teachers should be allowed to support you. Positive engagement is crucial. We've seen a lot of engagement over the last several months in Eau Claire and beyond. Our public schools belong to all of us, and we can help them move forward, become safer and more welcoming. We can support educators as they support students and demand that every kid in Eau Claire has the resources they need when they need them. But as we engage, remember that the children and teens are paying attention. Our community must unite to support them, to show them that their safety, security, and identity should never be up for debate. By doubting them and lending legitimacy to dehumanizing dialogue, we've already made a serious error, and it's time to correct our behavior. Voting in the spring election was one small step. We can attend school board meetings to speak our support for LGBTQ plus students and families and staff and everybody else into the public record, be relentless listeners and defenders of Eau Claire's LGBTQ students and students of color, students with disabilities, and students in poverty, because they're here now, and we can't make them wait for our collective healing. We still have an opportunity, as I see it, to build a more affirming society. We can be a leader for the rest of Wisconsin and beyond, and we can model what it looks like to put students first. As adults, we are responsible for our own discourse. The kids can hear us, it's up to us what kind of message we send them. So, in conclusion, I just want to say that I wrote that not to pat ourselves, or you as board members, or anybody on the back, or to make it just sort of a personal reflection, but really just to implore much further and deeper long-term action from all of us. As we all have daily conversations, and as you as board members write and review budgets and policies, commit or recommit yourselves to the long project of making every space into one where students, as well as families and other individuals, are safe and affirmed. We've seen how words spread through a community and can even put a place like Eau Claire into a national spotlight. Those of us who are committed to the shared values that I wrote about should hold ourselves accountable and work on our own community daily to be the leaders whose message spreads like wildfire. Don't make LGBTQ kids guess whether they're safe with you, is what I'm trying to say. Make it obvious if they're safe with you, make it clear to them, be the person that leads on that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Second recognition this evening, April is Mung Heritage Month, and from the Eau Claire Area School District Mung PTA, we wish to recognize some of the notable moments in the district's history with our Mung community this evening. Mung Heritage Month serves as an opportunity for our community to reflect on the sacrifices the Mung people have made for our country. This is also an opportunity to honor and celebrate the rich culture, traditions, and legacy of Mung Americans and their contributions to the enrichment of our, our community, our state, and our nation. This is also a chance to recognize the ways in which the Mung have enriched the local ECASD. In April 2012, the City of Eau Claire, in partnership with UW Eau Claire's Mung Heritage Month Committee, first celebrated and recognized Mung Heritage Month. And the state of Wisconsin has been formally recognized in April as Mung Heritage Month since April 2015. The month of April in this time of year is particularly important in our community's history with the Mung. For instance, the first Mung families arrived in Eau Claire on April 9, 1976, and as a result, the district and UW Eau Claire partnered together to establish an English-as-a-second-language educator training program. A few additional notable milestones among our community members with the Eau Claire Area School District include, 1993, the first Mung community member, Charles Vu, ran for a seat on the school board. While this campaign was unsuccessful, it laid the foundation for civic engagement among Mung community members in the area. In 2001, Dr. Kaiying Zhang became the principal of Locust Lane Elementary and becomes the first Mung person to be named to an administrative position in the district. 2013, the first Mung person, Chu Zhang, who is also a North High alum, class of 03, was successfully elected to a seat on the Eau Claire Area School District Board. 2018, the first dedicated courses to teach Mung history, culture, and language is offered for K-12 students, and is first taught by the Eau Claire Area Mung Mutual Assistance Association. And in 2020, the Eau Claire Area School District Mung PTA was established in March. Today, there are over 1,000 Mung students enrolled in the Eau Claire Area School District and over 3,000 Mung community members living in the area. Moreover, the schools today offer Mung courses as part of their social studies curriculum. The Mung community and the Eau Claire Area School District have enriched each other in so many ways over the past 46 years. We are very thankful for this relationship. And then it's picture time. The E2 Tea Company, the Chippewa Valley Montessori Charter School. One of our E2 classrooms, that would be 4th and 5th grade, runs the E2 Tea Company. They make their own tea blends using herbs they grow and dehydrate in their classroom. Flavors include mint chamomile, chamomile. Chamomile, alright. Zesty citrus mint and soothing tea blend. They package and sell three tea bags for $2 a box. They also make and sell hand-pressed mugs for $5. Every Friday, staff can also purchase a mug of tea for $1, and E2 students deliver it right to the staff member. To date, the E2 Tea Company has raised over $500 selling tea, mugs, and delivering drinks. They had their chance to deliver their first donation just before Thanksgiving this year due to the district closet, a program run out of the downtown district offices offering families clothing and school supplies. And that's, we've got Pam Herbenson, the principal, Kirk Jansen, the teacher, and we've got some 5th grade students tonight. So, we'll start with that group first with the certificate, and then we'll go backward with Leah Dang, and then Christian.
We brought some tea for you guys, too. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Guys, this is awesome. Thank you.
Lemon grass. I'll fill out my gift.
Thank you.
Drinks.
We have to stay around here.
Now move on to tonight's public forum. Board provides four minutes for each speaker to address the board. I will remind speakers that we do not hear individual complaints about board members or any member of the school community. I think I'll get all the names right tonight, but if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. When you come up, please, you're welcome to the same podium where Christian was speaking earlier. If you would start by saying your name and address for the record. Our first speaker tonight is Judy Hepner Olson.
Hello, my name is Judy Hepner Olson, and my address is 1767 Drummond Street. Good evening, school board members. I wanted to share with you that what occurred a few years ago when I was working in the Eau Claire Area School District. Even though it was a few years ago, I've been away from Eau Claire. I know it's still occurring, as I have asked some 8th graders, and they told me it's still going on, and I know it's been going on for years. I wrote to the principal because it disquieted me back then, and it still disquiets me. I was called into an 8th grade health class to help monitor it. Sex education was being taught. My concern today is not about sex education in the public schools, nor am I speaking against the teacher. She was most likely teaching what she was told to teach. What disturbed me was that the boys and girls were together. Now here, while talking to you, I do not feel comfortable mentioning the names of our private parts, but there among the young teens, the private parts were stated openly and repeatedly with graphics. What can this do to these young hearts? It begins to de, demoralize modesty. For instance, as a young girl, I can relate, as I was a young girl once. What she sees and hears is her private parts openly spoken of and displayed before the boys. How would she feel? Unless she's brazen, hopefully not, she would feel uncomfortable and embarrassed. What does a young girl do with these feelings? Well, she may think, "The authority in the classroom speaks about my private parts openly. Perhaps my uncomfortable feelings are wrong. Perhaps foolish of me to be, feel embarrassed." Helps to destroy modesty. It brings confusion. Or the students could reject the teaching, talk to some young man about this, and they said the class was a waste of time. I spoke with a young woman, and she said she zoned out. Instead of dealing with uncomfortable feelings, they rejected the class. Another question, is it a good didactic atmosphere? Does it promote asking questions or making comments? Learning increases as students participate. I didn't see one student ask a question or make a comment. What student in the presence of the opposite sex is going to ask or make a comment about their private parts, something so personal and intimate? So my point in this is to have the boys and girls separated. A female teacher for the girls and a male teacher for the boys. Would be the same curriculum, and it would be more beneficial and sound all the way around. I spoke with some 8th graders yesterday, asking if they would rather be separated, and would they ask questions? And they said yes. So my question is, how can this be implemented? Did I email you all about this, or what can I do?
So the board doesn't respond usually during public comments, so if you would like to email us, we, of course, will be able to respond in email.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Pete Adler.
Where have you been? My name is Pete Adler Jr., N6898, North Prairie Lane, Duran, Wisconsin, 54736. For seven years, a proud South Middle School Falcon. 24 years, a proud North Star Middle School Poler. And for 31 years, a proud Eau Claire Area School District employee. You'll have to excuse me if I get a little fired up during this presentation. I'm very passionate about this profession and the obligation I have honored the past 31 years, along with my colleagues. I grew up in the, in an era that believes in the value of people, helping your neighbor, honoring your obligations, and treating one another fair and with respect. Most of the communication in this era did not take place through technology, but rather face-to-face. Principal was something other than a person who ran a school building. I hear our district leadership saying money is the number-one thing drawing new candidates. I disagree with this statement. I believe money is the only concern for employees who don't care to make a career out of education. I believe the candidates you want are the ones who are willing to invest in their future and join a team with a true leader and positive working conditions. For 31, for 31 years, I have stood in solidarity with my teaching brothers and sisters in the classroom, in this district, and in this community. We have always operated as a collective group, having communication, discussion, and our voices heard to ensure the best for all. This model was one to make sure that all members were treated fairly, equitably, and with respect. This is what has built the Eau Claire Area School District to be one of the finest districts in the state, where teachers have dedicated a good portion of their lives for 30-plus years of service, while parties involved. In the past couple of weeks, we've seen leadership make decisions without input, dividing the group of educators who have stood in solidarity all these years, punishing the very group who have given the very most over time. These decisions regarding people's lives and futures without discussion, input, or the history of how we got to where we are today, is nothing short of criminal. Our district over the years has gone all-in. Our district over the year has gone all-in on investing, professing, and educating on the very important issue of equity. Everyone should be treated fairly, without discrimination, regardless of who you are. For our Board of Educators, for our Board of Education and district leadership to make the decision to give themselves a raise, move active employees forward with a historical raise with no or low increase of insurance costs at the expense of the employees who have stood by, dedicated and devoted to this district their entire career, to lose thousands as you divide the group, shows true inequity. All the district's investment, professing, and educating on equity is either lip service, lies, or a narrative that fits their agenda. We are also told the district does not have the money to keep the retirees on the insurance plan with the actives, but then gives a historical raise that is more money than the insurance plans, with the actives being on there, keeping the retirees with the actives, and still giving a historical raise to active employees, creating a true win-win situation. Contradiction by leaders and true hypocrisy. Martin Luther King once said, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." I believe it is the responsibility of the Eau Claire Area School District's Board of Education and the Eau Claire Area School District's executive team to take responsibility, show true leadership, listen to all your employees, go back and revote in the best interests of all members, and right this wrong. I believe you want your legacy to be one that brings people together, honors your moral and ethical obligation.
Mr. Adler, that's your time.
Obligation to assure the best for all, not a legacy that tears people apart, ignores the moral and ethical obligation you made, and drastically affects.
Adler, I'm sorry.
Negatively now and in the future, without time to plan for such changes. Thank you. I apologize, I went over a couple seconds.
Our next speaker is Jane Adler Corning.
Good evening. My name is Jane Adler Corning. I live at 3707 South Valley View Place, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, and my favorite people call me Mrs. Corning. In 1995, I was hired at Memorial as a school counselor. Before email, before Google, and before education was just about politics. One of my, one of my college professors said to me, "You really hit the jackpot." I couldn't have agreed more. I was 26 years old. I had turned down another offer, an offer for more money, but I knew the district had a reputation for providing good benefits, so I chose Eau Claire. It hasn't always been an easy road, but I'm so proud of the thousands of lives I've impacted as a school counselor. I'm even having second-generation students. It has been and continues to be a privilege. My aunt taught at Boyd Elementary for 34 years, starting in 1931. My brother, who just spoke, is retiring after 31 years of teaching FIAID in middle school. I plan to retire next year after 28 years. My husband just retired with 31 years. My dad taught 35 years. I have two sisters who taught kindergarten for a combined 60 years. Education is in our blood. Honestly, I think that is why education is suffering. The pipeline to being a teacher has been severed, because we are no longer encouraging our children to go into education. After a while, they see the toll it takes. My parents have 12 grandchildren, not a one who went into education. I share this because somehow people are thinking it's only about wages that attract or keep young people in education. That is not true. My daughter, who's 23, just accepted a civil engineering job. She looked at wage, but also benefits and the culture of that workplace. She reached out to current employees and asked how they liked working there. Sadly, I think if people were to ask many of us currently working in the district if it was a positive experience, we'd sadly have to say no. During spring break, the board was not fully aware or informed about a decision they were asked to make. There was no option four. Keep retirees with actives and go to a narrow network. That would have saved $3 million and still given actives a 4.5% raise. But for the person offering the options, that wasn't a choice they wanted to give the board. That change will give me personally, a monthly premium of $315.75 less for one year. The long-term effect of that is a decrease of $37,890. Let me say that again. I will lose $37,890 over the next 10 years. In addition, I will be put on a retiree plan with a higher premium. No grandfathering in, just done. No ability to plan, just done. I can't believe that any of you here would intentionally do that to someone who has given their entire working career to this district, to the thousands of kids and families who considered me a blessing in their lives. When my daughter interviewed for that job, she recently accepted, they said a man there had been there a long time. Someone replied, "A lifer." One of the young employees didn't even know what that word meant. My mom, my daughter replied, "That's my mom." I love the district, I lead purple, but in But in times when we can be hiring two counseling administrators that we never had before at Top Dollar and multiple new instructional coaches, interventionalists, directors, and giving administrative raises, but we can dump on the most loyal, committed, dedicated employees, it affects how I feel. My dad always said, "Retire while you still love your job." I do love my job, but what's been done to me and many of my colleagues and friends makes me not love my employer or the people who are negged on a promise made to me twenty-seven years ago.
Mrs. Corning, that's your time.
Okay. My last sentence during this holy season, I hope who, I hope who will of you will have the courage to speak up and and right this wrong.
Thank you. That completes our public forum for the night. We'll move on to our regular reports. We'll start as always with the Budget Development Committee and Commissioner Lyons.
Budget Development met on April fourteenth and we picked up right where we left off at the work session. We talked a lot about process and about pulling together ideas to set priorities. We also talked a great deal about timeline with the goal of having a referendum question developed by the board in August and backing up from August. I know we have some work sessions in the summer months that the board can elect the recommendations that will be developed in Budget Committee and we're over the next couple of weeks, review that, get feedback from the community, which is also one of the things we did at the last meeting. We reviewed a lot of the information that was developed by the open forums and feedback from the community. So we're going to be meeting on a regular basis, weekly, and trying to develop priorities for what the referendum priorities are. That's the report.
Thank you. Now move on to our legislative liaison. Welcome, Dr. Johnson.
Well, yeah, thank you. Governor Tony Evers acted on forty-three bills passed by the legislature. Among the bills vetoed were the following: Assembly Bill nine sixty-three, Rights Reserved to a Parent or Guardian of a Child, the so-called Parent Bill of Rights Bill. Assembly Bill nine sixty-six, Reorganizing the Milwaukee Public School Systems into four to eight school districts and creating a Milwaukee Public School Redistricting and Implementation Commission. Assembly Bill nine seventy, Eliminating Income Limits for Parental Choice Programs. Senate Bill five eighty-five, Reporting Certain Crimes and Other Incidents That Occur on School Property or School Transportation and Granting Rulemaking Authority. Senate Bill six ninety-five, The Number of Independent Charter Schools Authorized by the College of Menominee Nation or the Lakutere Ojibwa Community College. The governor signed into law Assembly Bill four twenty, Payments to an Independent Charter School Authorized by a Tribal College. Assembly Bill nine seventy-five, Substitute Teacher Permit Issued by the Department of Public Instruction, Signed into law and that particular law allows pre-service teachers with a certain minimum requirements to automatically be granted substitute licensure by DPI to address some of the substitute teacher shortages. Preliminary unofficial results until all canvassing has been completed reported to the DPI indicate that sixty-five of the eighty-one school referendums on the April fifth ballot were approved by voters of the district where those questions were presented. That's almost eighty percent. Referendums asking voters to approve borrowing for school construction are renovation passed at a lower rate, seventy-one percent. Overall, ten of the sixteen referendum questions turned down by voters asked for approval issued debt. Referendums seeking approval to exceed the revenue limits on a temporary, non-recurring basis were approved at a higher rate, ninety-two percent than the overall passage rate. Referendums seeking approval to exceed the revenue limits on permanent recurring basis were less successful, at sixty-two point five percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Now move on to our consent agendas. I will remind everyone that, you know, even our consent agendas are essentially regular business that come up. Mary has many of them on her recurring calendar that go in at different places. There's nothing necessarily out of the month. I think the only thing that might be out of the ordinary is we're doing our authorization for executive directors, maybe a meeting or two earlier just to make sure that we're set for the summer, but it is all of these things. Are regular for both of our consent agendas. The board acts with one vote without discussion. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it can be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent consent agenda includes Human Resources Employment Report, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Budget Adjustments, Gifts in the Amount of forty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars, sixty-one cents for the period of March first, twenty-twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two, Payment of All Bills in the Amount of five million, four thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, twenty-four cents, and Net Payroll in the Amount of four million, two hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars, seventy-four cents for the period of March first, twenty-twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Financial Report, March twenty-twenty-two. Preliminary Notice of Nonrenewal for Limited Term Contracts. Reemployment of Certified Staff for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three School Year and Authorization to Executive Directors for Summer Months. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
So moved.
Terry, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beke? Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
We'll now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda includes minutes of closed session, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, minutes of board meeting, March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, minutes of board meeting, April fourth, twenty-twenty-two, to ratification of ECASD and ECAE Master Agreement. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
So moved.
Terry, if you would do once again a roll call vote.
Commissioner Beke?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
I will now move on to monitoring of district results. We have two results policies tonight. We'll start with R three and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Before I go into R three and R four, after the consent agenda, I'd like to make a statement for after approval of employment report.
I'm sorry. I had it in my mind right up until the board consent agenda. I apologize.
Not going to interrupt my boss, I know better.
You should.
With the approval of the employment report, we're very pleased to welcome Dang Yang as our First Director of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. Dang has earned his bachelor's degree from UW Eau Claire in Communications and his master's degree from the University of Minnesota Twin Cities in Multicultural Teaching and Learning. Dang has previously served in a number of large educational and noneducational institutions in the Eau Claire area in EDI leadership roles. He has experience supporting students of color, students with disabilities, and students impacted by gender inequity. Dang has chaired EDI committees, served as a Title IX investigator, and been a first responder for bias incident reporting to support victims of discrimination and bias. Aside from his wealth of EDI experience in the workplace, Dang is an active community leader in Eau Claire, volunteering his time in the community, committees, serving our schools through the Monk PTA Family Advisory Council, and much more. Dang has a passion to serve our schools and ensure success for all students. We're so excited to continue the very important work of ensuring equity and success for all students with Dang as our leader, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-two. Welcome to Dang Yang.
Check with you first. Can we go to R three now?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll now move on to our monitoring of district results in R three. Superintendent Johnson?
Thank you. This evening for R three and R four, you may see some of the same types of themes where we think we, you know, we've failed to make some reasonable progress, but also made some reasonable progress with some exceptions. I'd like to share that we had quite a bit of help with this from various members of our executive team, Lisa Steeg. Let's see, who else?
Just making sure that our note taker is ready.
Oh, I thought it was tapped on the shoulder for something.
No, I I needed, I was making sure that Commissioner Lyons was ready to. I apologize. Yeah, we're we're really knocking it out of the park tonight. Thank you, Dr. Beke, for reminding me.
Anyway, we've got quite a few folks helping out with this. It's been a quite a bit of work and I do appreciate the board's patience on this over the last month, month and a half, collecting this data with our assessment department. With R three, with lifelong personal development and growth, our compliance status, overall making reasonable progress with exceptions noted. Across many of the indicators, it's, you know, due to the beginnings of specific programming, impact of COVID on our students, the alignment of our activities and assessments, and at times our inability, and we've shared that before, to gather as a team of educators, especially October all the way through through February, for the most part. Those are key times for us in this process. With identifying, pursuing personal goals overall for three, one, making reasonable progress with exceptions. However, you know, indicator one, I had put down failing to make reasonable progress because the six-twelve explore career matches doesn't include K five. As I said, a few people, we do have some comments or some questions from folks. The team would probably be far better equipped to answer than I would. For indicator two, making reasonable progress, you know, from JA connections all the way through to individual senior conferences and meetings. Character strong is key with that as well. But it's really nice to have, you know, a little bit more across all grade levels. So that's three, one. Three, two, where students understand and demonstrate the habits and choices that positively impact their physical, mental, social, and emotional needs. We placed making reasonable progress with exceptions. Again, the activities and assessment tools, making reasonable progress with exceptions. We put down, you know, as evidence portrait of a graduate learner profile, those essential competencies, character strong, purposeful people, those items. And then scrolling down a bit more with with our health classes, ACT, QPR. And then indicator two, baseline data collected, established for all levels of students on absence and presence of habits and choices. Again, making reasonable progress with exceptions. For three, three, students employing strategies to deal with adversity, conflict, and change, making progress with exceptions. Again, universal activities and assessment tools. You know, with many of these, throughout, they're fairly fairly new, so we're establishing some some baseline and that's some intense summer work. If we scroll down a bit, with indicator number two, failure to make reasonable progress for absence, presence of effectiveness to navigate adversity, conflict, and change. Just simply our health curricula and our Swiss data within the PBIS framework, just, we believe, failure to make reasonable progress. We have more to go. And as I said in the in the summary to this, you know, we expect to have this completed by the start of the school year. Again, intense work, but we're just not going to say, "Well, we're going to adjust the indicator just so we can make some reasonable progress." For three, four, this is back from our meeting in February. We wanted to alert the the board, the future board policy recommendation recommendation change for three, four is to keep the language consistent with DPI competencies. The emotional development, the self-concept, social competence. We placed making reasonable progress with exceptions. If we look at indicator one, again, we have more with all the way K twelve as opposed to simply at the secondary level. And then for the second indicator, if we were to scroll up a little bit more, again, all levels of students on the absence of presence. You know, the SEL just thought was light, failure to make reasonable progress. In moving to three point five, exhibiting intellectual curiosity and interest in life lifelong learning, due to the indicator and the corresponding evidence, we felt that making reasonable progress on this with universal activities and some assessment tools with the three bullets above. You've heard us quite often with the EMLSS framework and that supportive learning environment, but also placing a couple examples of Manufacturing Day for our students, especially at the six-twelve level. We're to scroll down to indicator two, progress with exceptions. Again, we collect that baseline data, but then establishing for all levels of students. You know, getting that results to increase annually, we we know that COVID has been a factor here, whether it's attendance, student choices and opportunities. But again, the evidence is shown and as well as to to hear from some of our executive team members about some of the specifics and history on that. And then finally, for three point six, you know, development of practical life skills, placed as a failure to make reasonable progress. In previous results policies and some operational, you know, we did probably not assess ourselves maybe so difficult, I guess. But with this one, especially with going on indicator number two and number three, again, making reasonable progress with exceptions for the first indicator, but but the last two, we did not meet, we did not meet those standards. Absence of presence of the ACP items, increase those results annually, and as we saw in indicator three, participation in co-curricular and extracurricular will increase every year. Again, could we say, "Yep, due to the pandemic"? Yeah, it's it's certainly a concern, but that was the indicator we placed. But I look to 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 better data next year on that. If you scroll down a little bit with the failure, again, I mean, we we look at the data. Obviously, we don't have it for, you know, nineteen, twenty, but taking the year before the pandemic. And then last year, we don't have those completed yet for twenty-one, twenty-two. You know, hopefully at the end of the school year, might that rise? Yeah, that'd be great, but this is, you know, the data doesn't lie. And again, we're seeing our our underrepresented groups dropping, so that opportunity gap continues to widen. So therefore, failure to achieve reasonable progress. That's basically it for my summary with going through three, one, all the way through three, six. Although I would definitely take comment or do my best to answer questions, I believe. Our folks in the, you know, various areas here in the audience will be able to help us, so.
Can you see Superintendent Johnson, comments and questions from board members and our student representatives, of course? Doctor Johnson?
Yeah. So I I guess for me, for R three and for R four, you know, I, and of course, I will not be able to vote in favor of either of these documents. I I I'm I'm a little bit. When 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 we when we choose to select things as evidence, we're, we work under an underlying assumption that 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 those things that we choose as evidence have assessments that give us outcomes. Some of these things are just like list of items that either have assessments still in their in their creation and are not really clear, clear outcomes. And 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 for me, it appears, and I I'll be honest, because, you know, I I have some stronger comments on R four, but I moving moving forward, unless we get to a point of accountability and assessment for like character strong and for the elementary version of it, that should not be, that should not be on here. It should, it's not not only my my children's own personal experience. And I I the the other thing that's troublesome, we 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 have on here SEL competencies, which one? The DPI, what is it, a list of, was it twenty-six or twenty, what's the number, twenty-six or twenty, which which ones? And those documents also come with some assessment ideas and tools. And so for me, I'm, I if moving moving forward, if if this is kind of how the the results just become this collection of of ideas or what sounds good because we'd like to have it on there, I I I this to me, I I'm just really this creates actually a stagnation. a stagnation, lack of actually moving in any particular direction. And I, I, you know, I, I would like to see if, you know, moving forward, for me, it would be one, one, one evidence for an indicator that we have sound accountable measures for, that we can establish, or, and, and not even re, not even creating something that's in the works. You know, I, I, I just, I'm reading both of these, it, I was, I was a little bit, I was a little bit disheartened. I, and I'm, to, to be quite honest with you, I'm, I'm really unsure kind of how, how, how the decisions were made, uh, in terms of kind of where, how, what's, what's deemed pro, what's deemed progress? I'm, I'm, it's, 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 it's unclear. What, what's, what's deemed, what's deemed progress? But I really, I, 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 I'm, I'm just bothered really about the, the, the character strong and the purposeful people being embedded in this piece when it's, I think admittedly so, it's put in the introduction that we're still in the process of developing some type of assessment tool to really get at that. And really, probably where the assessment tool needs to start is that the competencies of actually the individuals who are supposed to be delivering this. I, uh, so I, for, for me, those, those are my comments, uh, and I, I, I think for me, it's really, the R three is, is, is one thing, but the, the, the R four is another piece that really, uh, we, this is not, I, I realize we've become in this exercise of trying to actually develop these particular results, that we, we, we are under this impression that they have to look exorbitant. They don't. They, they, they do not. And, you know, I, I, where, where the frustration lies for me is, I don't know, I would not know as an educator in this particular district, what, what do I do with this? And I'm not even sure building leaders know what to do with this. I, 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 yeah, I, this is, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling. Thank you.
Before we go on to others, I, I just want to ask a clarifying question of you, Doctor Johnson. What I'm hearing you say maybe is that you don't feel with this, among, among other things, but I'm thinking about it in the process of how, you know, depending on how the conversation goes, you don't feel as though this report has put you in a position where you can accurately monitor the state of the district? Like you, this, this doesn't give you enough to say, I feel, I feel confident in saying this is where we are as a district. Is that, is that what I'm, is that correct in what I'm hearing?
Pretty much, because I, like I said, there's, there's, there's not true, uh, 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 outcomes with assessment tools that, that, that are here. This is just a list of, so, so for me, that's, that's, that's where I am.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify as we go forward. Commissioner Zer?
Sure. So I think I agree with something that Doctor Johnson has said. I'm just gonna go through, because one of, one of my, my inquiries, and I said it when we, when this was, when this came up the first time, is how much we would potentially gain as a board with, with our results policies through redefining ready and/or a more robust portrait of a graduate that would have academic indicators, career readiness indicators, and life readiness indicators that the district had chosen and then had data points that it was monitoring specifically, you know, over time, so we could see aggregated out where we were at, and, and if potentially that is something that we're aiming towards, but I don't see that in here, but I think could help with what perhaps Doctor Johnson is, is saying. I'm just gonna go through kind of what I had for this policy. So three point one, in general, perhaps here, non-traditional student occupations, the Perkins definitions of those, how are we reaching students who fall within those categories? Those, what, what are they like? Unhoused, unhoused students, you know, like, non-traditional genders in certain occupations? There's a whole, I think there's eight or ten of, nine of them or something like that, but those categories, if that would be helpful, just from an equity standpoint, what, what specifics we're doing there? For indicator one, if we're gonna keep that, if that's something we want to keep moving forward, I'd like to see what the age appropriateness of, is of the K five, you know, what is the curricular specifics, you know, more hands-on activities, or what are we doing specifically at those K five levels, and how are we measuring it? Indicator two, number of students participating in these things would be helpful as a metric, or, you know, is it gaining, again, non-traditional student groups in those activities? Again, I think that really could be, are there, you know, what are the numbers of students and in what categories are we participating in work and career-based learning experiences before graduation? Again, that's, that is a very typical redefining ready indicator for career readiness, life readiness in general. Three, two, in general, I, I think this is where I probably echo Doctor Johnson a lot, is I, I just, I had a strong feeling as I went through this report of how we will present, be presented data related to this. I don't feel like we see enough, like, where are we at? Like, yeah, we're doing these things, but who's doing them? Because next year, when we see it, how will we know if we're doing better? And I feel like that is our, our, you know, what is our vision for growth, or what are our holes, you know, if, I think we saw a little bit of that with the data with the participation in extracurriculars, but there's gotta be more than that. And I, I feel, I feel like I cannot accurately ascertain just, yeah, we're doing these things, but where? How are we doing at them? So it's kind of, it's kind of tough. For three point four, if, and this, I suppose speaks not necessarily to the edit, but I think this is something that comes out for me in three and four, in R three and R four. You know, these resilience, resourcefulness, collaboration, self-awareness, even the DPI competencies, right? That is tier one universal curriculum embedment. That is, that is done in universal, for, for, from an equity standpoint, it has to be done at the universal level. And I don't see here enough evidence to show that this stuff is embedded at the universal level. And again, if it's not, then how are we going to grow it or change it? And I know that character strong is being done, but that's all I know is it's being done. I don't have percentages or understandings of how, again, how is it measured? How do we know that, that it's looking, I guess, in a way? So, and this was, I guess, when I got to three, six, it was very, very similar, is when we talk about ACP, I think one of the holes that we fall into is that it's something extra, right? That there's these lists of things that you do for academic and career planning. And I think that one of the things that we have to see, if we're really going to develop practical life skills, problem-solving time, these are, these are things that have to be happening in every single class, your French class, your math class, your personal finance class. It has to be universal, tier one, embedded, and every teacher has to feel confident and capable and have the tools to not only implement but assess. And I don't feel like I see that in this. And so, I, I mean, I, I think that perhaps, I don't know how we get there, I don't know if we, I don't know if we should wait a year to see this again. You know, I, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure, but I just don't feel like I have an accurate enough picture that I could say in a year that we've made reasonable progress. Where have we grown? That's what I'm concerned about. Not that I don't think this shows where we're at, I think it does, from, uh, these are the things that we do, but I don't think I could use this list as a tool to assess a year from now. I think that's what I'm struggling with.
Think I would, before we go to other board members, I think, not an excuse, an explanation, this is probably the most difficult year for us to do these, accomplish these, the first year of the results. I would agree on some of those. I would also agree that we don't wait a year. Would I go back with my team? If any team members want to interject with certain stages of assessment with character strong and what have you, that's great. I obviously wouldn't come forward again in a month to then, to, to kind of go over the same types of, well, this is what we will do. If anything, or if the board chooses for us to go that route, well, before the school year starts, because to wait another year, I just don't think is something we could do. Again, with some of these, with some of these programs, we're beginning to implement this. If anybody wants to share anything with collecting data, why we included certain items for evidence, how we plan to assess in the future, anybody looking back at Mandy or Doctor Jean?
Thank you for the opportunity. I don't know that I would be able to respond to all of the questions that were asked, but I will certainly acknowledge that the challenges of assessing social and emotional competencies that you expressed are the same challenges that we face. So with respect to character strong and purposeful people, this is our first year of implementation. We adopted the program last year, probably about this time, and worked with our staff a little bit to start rolling it out this year. Due to the challenges of COVID and not being able to have substitutes in the classroom for us to pull staff out to provide the full professional development that is needed, we are challenged with making sure that every staff member understands and knows the scope and sequence. The reason why purposeful people and character strong are important as part of our universal curriculum for every student is that we have aligned the twenty-four DPI competencies into those lessons. And so if those lessons are taught as intended and as provided, we should be able to hit on, at the universal level, all of the twenty-four DPI competencies within the three domains. Obviously, we know there's a lot of work to be done in that area, because again, our commitment to our staff was that this was our first year into this program, we needed to get through the program to experience the lessons for the teachers on a universal level as well. And we know that we have work to do with regards to the implementation team at each of the buildings moving forward, and we have plans to take a look at that. With regards to really assessing the competencies themselves, that will be a challenge indeed, because DPI has been very purposeful with us in talking about how we don't come out and assess SEL competencies to the students, because they are competencies and not standards, like economic standards that we measure with, you know, with respect to students getting A's or C's. It is very hard to do that with social and emotional competencies as it changes over time, it changes with life experiences, it changes, you know, situations that students and families are in. What we do need to take a better look at is really the implementation at the building level and in the classrooms with our adults and how that is going. We recognize that, and we know we have work to do in that area, but unfortunately, due to the years that we've had, it's just been very difficult for us to pull staff out to do the work that is needed to be done. So we certainly have those same concerns and challenges as well, and we know we can do better.
Could I respond to, to, to say? So I, uh, thank you, Doctor Jean, uh, for, uh, for your perspective. I, what, what I would argue, though, on the one, as it relates to character strong, maybe, uh, uh, that the starting point would be is actually the assessment of the ability of our staff to deliver before we think about anything on, on, on the student side. And for me, if that was, if that was an indicator that was embedded in here, that, that would be a, 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 a very good point. And I, 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 I agree to a certain degree as you were talking about that assessment of competencies, but then, we have incompetent, uh, we have competencies then embedded in some of our, in our, in our three, our, our three pieces. So if, if there's this challenge or this difficulty of actually assessing those, they should, they potentially should not be highlighted. So for instance, that suggested change for R three and R four, there, there are starting, start, starting points. I, I, I think that the important piece is, though, wherever we start, before, before we even get to the students, we, 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 we have to allow, uh, uh, the professionals who are supposed to deliver it have some level of competency. And, you know, I, I think this is where another piece would be is to get feedback actually from our students. I, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure, uh, 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 our students would give us, give us feedback about SEL. And for, you know, and I'm, I'm probably a little bit too much into this, because my, my wife is one of the building leaders at the, at the elementary, at the elementary level, but I, I'm disheartened. What I hear from my two middle schoolers, uh, uh, in their experience with, uh, uh, with, with, with character strong, I'm disheartened in, uh, uh, comments that I have when I, I visit some of the high schools. And so maybe that's that other piece where, where we start of being able to actually get the feedback before we think about inserting, uh, 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 kind of what will potentially happen in, in a year's time. Thank you.
Noted, and I think we are also looking at the activities of the, of the staff and the implementation science that's being followed, and that will likely be a step that we have to take a look at. You are absolutely right. I think, again, because it's our first year, we also wanted our staff to take a look at the program as it is and look at where we can do better in terms of professional development for them, but certainly your comments are noted.
Please.
I could just jump in briefly. In some of the artifacts that we reported, we really wanted to paint a picture, create a story of what our students are learning through academic and career planning, for example, how to pull out a job application, interviews, youth apprenticeship, our manufacturer, kids that went to the manufacturing day. If for data piece, I can't give you the numbers for next time, because I, I was thinking more of just showing artifacts, how many kids learned about labor market information, how many kids went on Wisconsin, you know, are they learning about the, the jobs that are out there? Do they know what kind of training and income, things like that? So we are getting that information out to students, so I need to ask them, how many classrooms for maybe participation data right now? So I know we have our redefining ready to have that data come forward. The first time on this, it really was hard, thanks to share a story, but I can certainly look into getting more of that, how many students participated in these, how many kids went to the wagon, the fellowship, character, for example, things like that, if that would help, I can certainly gather more of that data.
Doctor Jean?
I was sort of thinking, you know, kind of thinking about the two things that's gonna happen at the end, if we might need to do a little bit of that right now. I'm trying to find out why this feels so different from what we usually do, and I think one of the, probably one of the challenges for us as a group is that many of us sort of, this is the business that we deal in every day, and we don't, we don't necessarily have that with every boy or our, so, I don't know what it would take, I mean, I had my own questions, like, I understand the emphasis on universal activities and assessment tools. So I'm always thinking about, I mean, as a psychology professor, human universals and individual differences, you know, so I'm curious, you know, what you would do with character strong? I don't know, but I would think, I would hope it would be different with majority students than students from marginalized groups. You know, how you talk about race with white students is very different than how you might talk about race with students of color. So I, I have to assume that that's been considered, you know, and what, what would this look like? This is just the first year, you know, what would we think this would look like? I, I think it will be different in year two, five, and ten, and so on, but assuming that the programming was, you know, selected carefully, and it's the very first year, I don't know what, what would it, should it look, I guess? And why does this R feel different than other, you know, other times we've been through this process?
I think I can speak to why.
I want to make sure that others.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
And so I'll put you on the document, but I know Representative Loken and Commissioner Clements has, you know, or. So I'll.
That's okay.
I'll put you back in order. Thank you. Go ahead, Representative.
I have three hopefully short questions for Dr. Jean. The first of which is how has teacher feedback been meant to improving this policy this year?
Can I ask all three questions or did you want one at a time?
I think one at a time would be best.
So the teacher feedback part is coming through off the meetings. We are polling together the implementation, team leaders at each of the schools. And at the end of April here, we are meeting with them to get their feedback and to talk about how it has gone in their buildings and to look at PD opportunities for next school year.
So to date, no changes have been made as a result of teacher feedback.
In terms of the implementation of character strong? Correct.
Next question is. Next year, how do you plan to improve the collection of teacher feedback? In other words, how will teacher feedback be collected next year?
We can look at teacher pulse surveys to look at how implementation is going again for this year in particular. We wanted to make sure that the teachers who are teaching the specific lessons got through the program. Our goal really is to look at the integration, as I think Commissioner Zer had talked about earlier, of making sure that these competencies are integrated in every class. And not just in the classes specific to character strong, but again, that's where we need to learn more about the program and how we've crosswalked the competencies. And then the rest of the building, they're not going to teach the specific character strong lessons to the purposeful lessons. But they will be ingraining that specific competency throughout the building and all of the classes that they have. And so that's really the work that we're looking to do. I don't know that that will happen right away next year. I think integration takes time because of limitations by, you know, with schedules and the curriculum that has to be covered. But we are looking forward to doing that work.
Alright, thank you. My final question is. How you plan to measure student engagement? Because to me, that appears to be the best indicator of the effectiveness of character strong.
Sure, we have talked about doing pulse surveys with students as well. In addition to that, we also have the DPI surveys that will be taken each spring by our students. We think ultimately because we're not measuring specific competencies of students with social and emotional learning. We need to be able to see the data come through in other sources. And so, for example, the YRBS that was given to all students in grades six through 12. We should be getting those results sometime this spring. But we take that survey every other year, and that's a very comprehensive survey. It's probably, you probably were part of that. We're hoping that those results provide a baseline for us and that over time, that data piece changes. So that's kind of the bigger universal data piece. But we also know that at the local level and on the more, I guess, building level, we need to do more of the pulse surveys. Looking at the student feedback as to how they're experiencing the program because that's really the heart of what we want to get at is that students are finding themselves more engaged. Because they have the opportunities to do what they're doing in, for example, the success classes. At the middle school level or at the high school level, your extended learning times. And also during your husky times, that those things are really coming out and alive for students, but then also integrated into the building. So yes, we are looking for data from students in that area as well.
Thank you. I hate to interject, it feels different. For me, on two reasons, Dr. Becca. Number one, you remember, and I know with the executive team back there, when we looked at the calendar. Of when we should be judging the results, the R2s. Number one, we've got forward exams and ACT and all those types of things, and the data usually shows up. Is it embargoed around the 15th, 16th of November? They lift the embargo where it can be public, Ms. Radke? So that was why I think the first, like R2 was done maybe December, but I think for sure by January. It's the life we've lived in forever. ACT, forward exams, we used to call them the WKCEs, like that's the data we, you know, our principals interact with so often. This is different. And also to the points made about assessing the readiness of our staff to be able to deliver it. There are a couple, at least a couple of new programs. I think, one, it's not really familiar to us for this one. And I think secondly, it's timing, like Dr. Jean said, some of these items will be surveying. Even later this spring, whether it's with a DPI type module or our own pulse survey. So here, you know, in R4, we're talking about discipline data. Well, we're cutting off the discipline at like April 13th from the North High data and the week before for the Memorial Day, we just go all through. Maybe this is something where we push R3 and R4 back a bit. I don't know, but that's why it feels a bit different to me, just in listening to the board. Or of our panel here discuss it.
Commissioner Clements, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Zer.
Thank you, Commissioner Nardine. So to your question, Commissioner Becca, why does this feel different to me? Tied into some some comments I was ruminating on to this point is that this is something where we've really anticipated measuring. Perhaps like many, but we feel, we feel like there was, needed to be more rigor and heft to what we were going to receive. And speaking as a layperson who does, who's not in educational pedagogy, I don't know what we should be measuring. I don't know how to measure it. I just know that when we adopted this. Monitoring and governance processes that we. The direction was we needed to monitor things and we needed to know that we were monitoring the right things. And I think I'd made these comments earlier in the in the process, perhaps when we were adopting is, you know, tell us how we. Tell us how you determined what we should be measuring. Because most of the people who are consuming this information, these reports, don't, don't have any idea what we should be monitoring. So kind of in a way of, you know, telling our parents, how do we know this is, this is the meaningful thing to be monitoring? And then tell us what the progress is. I I'd much rather this report read according to whatever authoritative research that's out there. Here are the things we should be monitoring, and guess what? We're not there yet. We don't have the data. Or or our data doesn't, is incomplete or doesn't look good. But the way that this this read to me was, here's a bunch of information and some artifacts, but I was like, I don't know, I don't know what to do with this. And I don't, I'm not sure this is reflective of what we need to know to know where we're, where we are. And for me, who's not in this area, I'm even more in the dark, I have no clue what we even compare this to. And so I think as how I'd prefer to see any of our results monitoring reports. Produced is kind of tell us what, what the state of knowledge is about what we should be measuring that matters according to what the. The policies are and then get into the, to the data. Because there isn't any of that context setting with any of these things. And frankly, some, I think some of the things that we measure are a little bit more straightforward, academic performance, for example. You know, I think most people understand the ranges of things that are measured for those, even if they're not always what matters most. But for things like personal growth and development, it's like, I have no idea what we should be measuring. And I have kids in school, I see them change day to day, but I don't know how to, how to track this on a population level. So that's not, you know, a particular indictment against either of these reports, just that. You know, I don't know how to make heads or tails of what, of what the information is you're set, you're sharing. And and then we may be able to evaluate, how do we know what progress means? But right now, you've just kind of given, given us, in my perspective, you've given us pieces to a puzzle, and I don't even know what it's supposed to be. Some of the pieces look really good, and some of the pieces don't look so good, but I'm not sure what to do with it.
Commissioner Zer.
So I think the, I think the thing about how, why this looks so different to me, first of all. We've, we've only seen one other R. You know, and we've been looking at OEs, which really are not our. I mean, they're, they're something we care about, but that's what they live and breathe. And I think this is the part where we, we gotta deliver on these. And when we get a results, a results report that has. None of them, none of them are really passing with flying colors on any of these indicators, you know what I mean? And so for me, I feel like that was what was like, whoa, was kind of like little bits of red flags. And here's, here's the thing is, I don't think, I don't think that what we need is necessarily rigorous student assessment or, you know. I'm not sure that that's the angle, but I think that we're already probably doing this stuff, right? Like, there are DPI, ACP self-assessment tools that, you know, districts do, right? You set goals for your Perkins funding. There are things that we're doing. What are those goals? What are we aiming for? Where are we going? What are the things that, you know, if we're doing curricular work? I think social, I think maybe that was in R4, social studies, and what, what are going to be the things that we're looking for there? You know, specifically articulated in either a goal document or a planning document. Something that we can come back to and say, okay, these are the things that we said we wanted to accomplish this year. To get us closer to this. I don't think it has to be rigorous self necessarily like, you know, As and Bs in, are you a good communicator? Whatever collaborator, are you a good, you know, I don't think necessarily that. But I just think, you know, how, what are the things that we're already doing? That are going to perhaps help. Help us see the trajectory that we're on. And I want to say too. That I think a lot of school districts are struggling with how to measure this stuff. This is not easy stuff to do. There's a lot of school boards that don't understand how to put this on paper. This is what we know our kids need, but how do we actually do that? So I don't think we're alone in struggling with this. I think it's, it's, it's normal. I, but I do think that perhaps it's just not quite. It's not, I just don't know how I take this in a year from now. Figure out where we're at, maybe six months, but. Yeah.
You know, I'm far more comfortable with Excel spreadsheets and budgets than I am student learning outcomes. I, but, but. As the father of a freshman during COVID. Where. I kind of saw just the breakdown of friends and the impact of sitting in a room and doing nothing, staring at a screen. I know the importance of this. And I don't know how to measure that other than it's a lot better this year than it was last year. But I guess, you know, to Reed's point. I did participate in an assessment program where it was continuous quality improvement. And we took a program and we were continually getting feedback, not only from teachers, but from students. And 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 changing the program on the fly all of the time as we got feedback. And I don't know if that's possible in this because I don't know the, the, the details and the intricacies of character strong. And I don't know the details of the program. Maybe that's a good thing. But. The idea of the outcome, I think, to reflect it. In the student reflection on how am I doing on these social, emotional life skills? You can't do that sitting in the basement on a computer, but you certainly can't do it through extracurricular activities. Regular interaction, places where there's an opportunity to fail, but also succeed. Having a net underneath those failures to be able to learn from. So I, I, I. I'm looking much forward to the market analysis discussion where I can really get my teeth into some numbers.
So I think what has become clear for me from listening to my colleagues. Is that we as a board don't feel necessarily like this report puts us in a place where we can accurately monitor. I want to say, Superintendent Johnson, thank you for your candor in many of these, right? To say we are not making the recent progress, we're not there yet, is, I think is an important and valuable step. But I think sometimes we don't know what we don't know. And I think the board has seen, we didn't know what we needed to see necessarily in order to feel comfortable with this. And perhaps, you know, as Dr. Jean had said, you know, we're still struggling with how do we present this? What do we need to know? How do we bring it forward? And, you know, Commissioner Zer, you said the same thing. We're not alone in school districts that are trying to figure these things out. I think what we see here, I think we've, we've been able to mention a few things that might help us as board members, you know. Dr. Johnson, you mentioned perhaps part of this, even though it's, we're looking at student results, part of that indicator could be where are our staff? How do they feel or what are, what are we prepared them to deliver character strong or purposeful individuals? You know, maybe that's, and, you know. Representative Loken and some of the others brought up, you know, are we getting student, how can we bring student feedback into that? So you mentioned yourself, Superintendent Johnson, those pulse surveys, how can we have those in front of us? And I think, you know, we've had an ongoing conversation as we've worked through this monitoring process. It is different because this is our, this is only the second time we've had a full report on results. And this is the focus that we have agreed, you know, we, that is to be the board's main focus is on student results. Had this discussion of, you know, many times, and Dr. Johnson, you brought this up a few times. How can we, how can we on some of the OEs not have as many indicators that we can, we can still feel comfortable with it, but we're not adding this extra work? It feels to me, and it did as I read through both of these, that perhaps this is an area where we need more. And we need to have that baseline data. And some of it, you said yourself, you know, we're going to be developing it. It's going to, we're going to have that piece. I think here we need to say, so if we can't on some of these things score. You know, how are our students doing at resiliency or how are they doing at emotional development, if I'm going to use one of those? But perhaps we can say. Here is a list of all of the places that we place emotional development issues throughout, rather than just saying it's in our universal. Well, maybe I need to see, you know, is it at every grade and where is it? And and what's, you know, does that feel thorough enough, you know, to the administration? Do we feel like we are covering these skills, this competency? Well, I think we might be. You know, with, again, examples of we're developing this in the first year and teachers are coming through it. You know, it's not to say that every time, you know, I can reflect back on my teaching career and say that not every lesson I gave was very good, and some of them were bad. I had to set all of my chemistry classes tests on fire with the Bunsen burner. Because they all did terrible the very first test they took, and that might have been more an indictment of my teaching than their skill. So we know that we don't always get everything right. So I do think we need necessarily more. I think we need to have a bit more. I think we've given some feedback on what maybe we could see or what things might help us as a board. I'm sure that the administration is thinking about how can we do this? These pieces are there. So now we need to know, you know, again, how many people, and I think we already had it mentioned as well, you know, how many people went through this particular issue? You know, who's doing JA in a day? You know, how, how across the board is that or how, you know, how many, how is it in different groups? So all this to say, I appreciate the candor, I think, but I'm not certain that this report is there to a place where we as a board can monitor. And what I would like to suggest, one of the tools that we have is to ask for this to come back. We can set it back, and I think you mentioned the calendar as well, that perhaps, you know. Perhaps this isn't the right place in the cycle to be monitoring it annually anyway. So one thing I'd like us to suggest, we don't have to accept or reject it, we don't have to change. I think probably, I would guess, because you've been fairly self-reflective so far, Superintendent Johnson, that your assessment of where we are on these things are probably accurate. In many ways, maybe they are, but I'm not certain I can, can know with what I have here. So we don't have to accept it or reject it or change it to, you know, failure to make or, you know, change any of the individual ratings. What we can do is just simply say, we don't think this report is ready, we'd like to have it back in the future. Not looking at, I have been fiddling around a little bit with looking at a, you know, potential draft of next year's monitoring calendar. That's something that's going to come up in, I think, May, or maybe the first meeting in June, it's on our calendar to have the next year's work calendar. I might suggest that we have it come back at the September 12th meeting. Which would be five months to do some of that over the summer development, which is a common theme throughout both three and four of places where we're not making progress. Might allow us to develop some of those, if not metrics, you know, places and measures, might allow us to bring some metrics in. It doesn't have to be that data. I was just thinking about when do we not currently have anything major on the calendar? I was just thinking about when do we not currently have anything major on the calendar that still gives some time to work over the summer? Or something like that. Um, so I, 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 I personally just don't know that I'm ready to say whether or not we're at that. I, I agree with you very much, Commissioner Zer, that I, you know, if we put this through today, how would I know that we've improved? You know, next year, some of them are clear, right? Now we have these metrics, you know, for the, you know. But some of them are not. Um, so that is one thing that we have at our, you know, that we can do as a board. And so I, I personally, just hearing the conversation, uh, would suggest that we do something like that. And I also would probably suggest it for our four, although we'll take time to maybe back and talk about. Um, but that's sort of where I'm at. And at some point we do, we do something to act on this perhaps tonight. Go ahead, Commissioner Zer.
Is there any issue with that of us not having a complete set of monitoring in a, in a year, in a board year? Is there any, going to be any problem with that as far as? Sure.
I think especially if we were to move it back and continue it in this calendar year. At the superintendent evaluation is one thing that's, that we are using this for. And if it is within the calendar year, we will still have a complete, you know, you know, a complete cycle. We'll also have a chance, you know, through the summer and going forward, you know, we have these now, we will have a lot more time open for focus on results that. Build, you know, we could have smaller segments so that we're getting deeper on some of these results. And it's not just our two, it's our, so uh, you know, I guess. My guess would be the, e- even if we said we're not going to monitor it at all this year and we're going to wait the full year and come back next spring. Then we would build the, the evaluation of Superintendent Johnson's performance without those two. And I think that might be, you know, that's, I don't think the evaluation, we can, you know, evaluate on whatever we have. I would, I don't think we want to leave this for a full year before we come back because I think this and four are too critical to, to drop off. Commissioner Alliance.
So from a process standpoint, are, are you asking us to table it or to move it to? Committee or to defer it or what, what kind of?
I think, I don't, I don't think there's necessarily a process. I, I think the motion could be something, I'm just motioned to have this re-monitored. On September 12th, for example. Um, you know, if it, if, you know, we all felt like it had to be officially tabled, but. You know, this is our work and so if we just say we want to re-monitor it on future date. Uh, I would, before we, you know, have that, maybe in discussion of such a motion, I would ask you, you know, does that seem like a reasonable time to? Build in some of this feedback additional or?
Well, however, the board would like to go, I, I can take rejection. That's okay.
I don't know that it's an issue of rejection. It's an issue of us wanting to make sure that we can do our job as effectively as possible and that allows you to do your job as effectively as possible.
Well, and I put, I put my team in a very poor position by not, you know, to Commissioner Clemens' point, asking the right questions. I did not prepare my team for, for this, for our three and our four. Um. And again, that's my responsibility. I like, I, I don't, I don't think it would be a good thing to wait a year. I think the Rs are too important. I feel better about meeting with my team, going through some of the questions to ask. Okay, let's, let's tell the board in the community what we should measure and why. Then get them the specific data. Um, measure not just students, but staff too. And I think you've known so far. We're very honest with, if we're not doing it, here's where we need to do it. It's a struggle. But I have to go to a superintendent's conference later this week. Am I going to look to John Bales to say, hey, John, back in oh seven, when you started this in DeForest, your first year? What happened? Like, well, well, here, here's our situation right now and here's what I'm really struggling with. Um. Or Brad Seren from Sun Prairie or others. But I want to meet with our team first, then to ask some others how they've struggled with this. And how they would go moving forward. But I would agree, I would appreciate the opportunity. Whether it's. Late August, early September, to be able to come back to say, all right, we have full sets of data. We've winnowed it down to what we really think is absolutely not, not putting a so much evidence in there. Ooh, maybe added indicator, but fewer pieces of evidence. I, I don't know, but I think. Those are the thoughts that are going through my mind right now. I don't think we can wait a year. I want to meet with my team, I want to meet with some other superintendents with coherent governance model. And to be able to show that accountability to the board that. What truly matters for this results, three and four.
A couple of things, one, I, I want to point out that I don't think we need less here. I think we need more. I think we need to have, and, and maybe it's not more um, indicators. But I think we need more information about where things are, right? I mean, so. You know, how many students are participating or, you know, I think we need more.
Efficient.
Sure, that's fine. And the second thing is I, I don't think this is required that we do that. I just wanted to make sure that we're thinking about what are the options on the table when we are at this? And I also want to recognize this is a team, this is a team that, you know, we, we all necessarily didn't know what it is that we needed. You know, I do think Dr. Johnson, you, you had maybe mentioned something about uh, teach professional development beforehand. So, you know, some of the things maybe we did know and we're realizing now, yes, we actually really do need that. But some of the things also, I think we might, you know, it is not just, it is, again, I don't think it's an issue of rejection. I think it's trying to build this and how can we use this to the best so that we can do our jobs most effectively? And again, that you can, Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you. So my preference is, we, we don't wait a year, but to, to Superintendent Johnson's point, just. Tell us how we're applying to evaluate these things, even if we admit we're not quite sure yet. Here's where we are. Um, here are some artifacts, some information we may have. Towards this item, even if we recognize it's not a complete picture. Uh, and recognize that this is in area where many of the components are, we're not quite exactly sure how to measure it. But let us, but kind of let us know that because I don't, you know, reading how, how it is written now, it doesn't, it doesn't suggest that. That part of our journey. Um, it's just, you know, here's some information. Um, and as a, as a board member, I'd rather see that, that journey unfold as we continue to develop. How do we measure our progress? Um, how do we sift and winnow through? Um, and recognize that we're not as well-prepared to. Uh, provide really good documentation on some of these things, perhaps we are on others. But I, I think we owe it to be honest about, how do we know where we are? Jake, you know, and, and some of those things might be, we're in the woods and we're not quite sure. Um, but, you know, I'd rather that laid out. And. You know, providing some information without the context of. Know, knowing where we're going.
Doctor Johnson.
Yeah, y- y- you know, I, 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 I guess for me, it's, it's. What? What, what I struggle with, not necessarily indicator, but it, what we include as evidence. Can't just be the item itself. That item has to have an outcome. Some, some, some measurable piece. I, I, and I'm also of the thought that, you know, uh, 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 I would go efficient more than more. And for me, what e- existingly, what do we have? And to Commissioner Clemens' point, it is quite possible that we don't have certain things. For certain indicators are, and that's fine. That itself tells a story. And so for me, I, the things that we don't have a, a, a direct assessment either, a, a, a outcomes for. Let's not include them regardless of how good they, they, they seem. So for me, I, where, where I say we, we remove character strong. Because how I read that, the only indication we would say is quote unquote that teachers were assigned. To teach a character strong lesson. I put that in air quotes, if that's a thing, right? That's, that, that, that's, that's not suitable. But the, the DPI surveys, the youth risk behavior surveys, uh, uh, I, I forget the, uh, 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 uh. The profession on the back there saying that you rearrange some of the uh, kind of the attendance pieces if we. Then it, it kind of makes, and it's okay if there's things that are not there. That tells a story too. That's where we need to go. Because the other comment that uh, uh, Superintendent Johnson made and that's embedded in here. Uh, ooh, well, Claire School is just going to be humping this summer with all this professional development. Of groups of particular teachers. What's, what, what's going to be entailed in all this profession, this professional development? Are there actually items that will be assessed on the effectiveness of, of, of the professional development? Building the competencies of the individuals responsible to deliver this either to their building? Or eventually to their students? So for me, it's, it's really just looking, looking at what you have on here. Where do you have, where, where do you have outcomes that don't have to be created, that are, that, that, that exist? And, 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 and we build off of that. Thank you.
My more was getting at that outcomes piece. It wasn't just adding more, it was what you had said earlier and you obviously said it much better. It was, yeah, I, we want, we need the outcomes here as well, instead of just the, the piece of information. Thank you for helping to, me to get that a little clearer in my head.
So I, I, I make a motion to, uh, if, uh, uh, I make a motion to, are we saying, uh?
If they bring this back for re-monitoring.
Bring our, bring, bring, bring our three back for reconsideration, what was September?
September 12th, but again, that, I mean, we, we can, we can have that as a base. We can do that now and then we can have that as a re, when we bring forward the new calendar, we'll make sure that that's appropriately on there. All right, maybe, you know.
I, I, I make a, a motion to uh, 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 bring back our three at a. Not determine uh, time, just as yet.
September 12th.
September 12th.
I'll second that.
Discussion on the motion. One question that I have uh, within this particular motion, and I know that's the date that I just sort of threw out there because I was kind of glancing at. What I think could be a possible counter. Um, that does probably lead into OE two and OE three in the next meetings, so I want to keep aware of that. But Superintendent Johnson, does that, and executive staff, does that seem like a reasonable timeframe for? To, to develop and, and take some of this feedback that we've been giving tonight? And maybe keep in mind that I would probably pre-suggest that for our course for our four as well. Other discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I will call the question, the motion is to move our three for monitoring to September 12th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, so we'll have this back uh, right now, September 12th. If that needs to be moved through a calendar discussion, we'll have that included in the overall approval of the work calendar. So at this time, we're going to move on to our four. I know I certainly felt a similar in terms of how I felt on our four with some other comments. If the board also feels somewhat similar, that maybe our, our goal should be potentially to bring this back. And if it, would we feel differently, of course, we can do differently. Um, but if that's the case, then I would like to request that after Lieutenant Johnson, you go through your. Presentation, that we focus our comments on that feedback about what, what more would we like to see or what more do we need? What more did we learn going forward so that we can, we can build that and hopefully, you know. A little shorter on this one, obviously we need the time that we need, but we do have uh, another item that I know Commissioner Alliance is excited. So uh, Superintendent Johnson, I'll, I'll.
Honestly, I, I feel the same way about our four. I, I mean. I don't. It's the same, I think it's the same feeling. That I think you'd probably be asking the same questions. I'd probably be looking to the back row and others in the audience for the same types of, do we have a bit more data? Let's say on. Discipline for, you know, parts of our, absolutely, but yet it's incomplete. We haven't finished the school year. Um, so we're simply benchmarking. But I, to save. A little bit of exercise. Now, if the board has specific questions, they'd like to email me so that I can meet with my team to ask further. Absolutely, but I think I don't feel. With our two, I felt a different way with three and four, I, I did feel differently as did our team. I know they did, so I don't. I mean, I could certainly go through it, but I.
I think that's.
I just, that's how I feel. That's what I think is best, so.
So I, I do want to open the floor to comments and questions uh. Going forward, especially so that we can build that feedback. So if we can move forward with, you know, moving it back again, that we're ready to go. So. I'm going to go Commissioner Zer and then I'll go over to you, Representative Logan.
Um, so I just, we're actually going to call the second draft. Um, so I think what I, I kind of stopped taking notes after I, after I wrote, uh, what is the vision for this result? That was my, like, the thing that I felt really, the vision for it. And I think you mentioned it last time of like, what is the big, what is the big thing? And, and so I, what, what I want to see, I think more than anything with these two, with, with three and four. Is not necessarily, I mean, I, yes, I do think we need to see where we're at. Also, where do we want to get to? So I don't know if it's even just a, you know, make a plan and a document and share with us of like, you know, a, a roadmap or a four-year plan of how we're going to get there. Some things that are going to happen, it doesn't necessarily even have to be, um. But what are the ideas that are bubbling around? What are the, the things that we know are best practice or things that we've been trying to get to? But now we've been in this crazy, you know, model for the last two years, three years, you know, like what do we, how do we get there? Um, so that we can help. You know, help kind of drive that vision and it has longevity. If, you know, two or three or four of us were to be gone, there is that document that says, here's what we're working towards. Here's what we've been working towards. How do we keep that train moving forward? Um, that is what I think I really wanted to see. And what I really want to see with this one, and I said it with our three, but I really mean it with our four. Is, is universality, right? Like that tier one universal curriculum, where, where are we doing it? What is our vision for doing it at the universal level in all content areas? That's what I want to see, right? So, um, again, if we're not doing it, if we are doing it, great. If we're not doing it, great, just tell us that, you know, and, and where we're going to go. So, vision, vision board, vision board it.
Thank you. Representative Logan.
I had one of our three that didn't fit into any of the other discussion. It's about page seventy-seven, which shows the participation in post-secondary education. These numbers are far lower than they should be and the fact that there isn't. Any noticeable emphasis on it is extremely disappointing to me. In terms of early college credit, which allows people to participate in any UW school. At the post-secondary level, taking nearly any class that they're qualified for. I was the only student at North who participated in it. This is an incredible opportunity and would serve as a great indicator on how students are doing. Because those who are participating in classes like this are growing and are being prepared for colleges. In a way that's far better than even AP classes. We need more emphasis on this and this is a great way to measure how students are doing. Take the pass rate, take the grades they're doing and we can see how our school is actually doing. There needs to be more emphasis on it than there is now.
So we're, we're back to our four now after, yes. So, um. Thank you, I get, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Uh, for, uh, for, for that, I think we, we also have to be, we, we have to be mindful that, that. Uh, you know, especially what you, what you, what you brought up in that particular table, those post-secondary opportunities when we. I, I think that's a cautionary tale that we have to make that when you said that it, it's available to everyone. Availability and actually being able to really engage in two different things and it looks different. I think for uh, uh, for different, for. I think for, uh, uh, for different, for different students. Uh, the, the, the R four, uh, and I Commissioner Zer's vision, vision board thing is, you know, I think is pretty, pretty interesting. Um, you know, the, the vision, I, I, I guess for me, it was the, the, when we, when we look at that, when we look at the data, uh, I guess for what, what's meant by, so let's just take R four one, for example. Students will value and respect diverse cultural norms and values. And then under indicator one, uh, it kind of has, uh, 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 this evidence of actually the, the, the types of, the types of clubs. Um, and, you know, I, I, I think clubs are no different in, you know, are a little bit different in high school or college. But a lot of those clubs typically are, uh, clubs that also serve as affinity groups for individuals who have, they, 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 they share something. Now, whether or not that's what they're, what they have in common is being shared to a wider audience. For me, that's when I think about R four one is, can you speak to those particular student groups? The, uh, 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 initiatives that they're doing without, throughout the school? That would be like a, a, you know, uh, uh, that, that, that would be something. But the idea of just having these particular groups, that's, you know, I think it's accommodating some of the needs that, uh, has been demonstrated for like affinity groups to allow individuals to navigate the, uh, spaces where they uh, uh, that they find themselves kind of, kind of marginalized. But those efforts that they're doing, how, how are those efforts being disseminated uh, to the larger school as a whole? I think that speaks to R forty, uh, R four, uh, R four one in its entirety, right? And so, um, that, that's really kind of uh, for me, it's just expanding upon those. I think that saying that there's, there's, there's groups and the the quote unquote, you know, I think the impact of the group, the impact for those, those students who are in it. And then what is even the awareness and our engagement and participation of those students outside of those groups? With the, you know, can you, can you somewhat cap, capture that? But, uh, this one for me, it, it was, this was really given the, given the climate that we, we, we find ourselves under now and kind of what we've experienced the last couple of months, or some would say, uh, multiple years. Um, you know, our, our, our students, our students prepared were all for for, and don't get me wrong, I, to, to me, fours this would be, I don't know, the most powerful thing that we could actually do, uh, as, you know, as, as a district. Because what speaks to me, and I'm not sure it happens, but when we say that contribute to the common good in society that is local, national and global. That's, that's a utopian idea about the educational experience. But I would argue, we've experienced over the last, uh, couple of months, quote, the nativist of, uh, O'Clair, who have been, uh, educated in our particular building and some of their current students now would not actually thrive in a national or global society. They would do well in Western Wisconsin. And that's, it's fine to do well in Western Wisconsin. But does your, does, does the, your, your intellect and thirst for knowing more allow you to be, 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 be successful? And so I, we really, for me, I, in, in essence, we, let's really get this right. And it's okay that actually we don't have, uh, particular, uh, particular measures. Uh, the only other thing could, could, I was, I was curious, could you just explain to me the, uh, uh, is the, 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 the discipline, the discipline data? What's the reason of the not of non-implicability piece? What was?
Oh, could you?
It's page eight.
Yeah.
Right under R five.
It's really difficult to gauge our progress because of last year's data. Because, oh, yeah, looks great because we're at school forty percent of the time, you know, so and then going back to nineteen twenty, well, that was incomplete because we didn't, weren't in school for like a third of the year. So that's why it was in, in, in every other one I've looked at, Sun Prairie, Racine, Forest, there are monitoring reports for this results in, when I'm measuring it, just because the data is so skewed. So that's, they'd have to go back to seventeen, eighteen and take this year's data to somewhat measure. That's the only reason why.
Doctor Beke.
So the conversation, really, Commissioner Dean, you were talking about the number of indicators that we had for R three. And although I didn't think about it with that arm, we never thought quite a bit about it for this one. And I agree, so Dr. Johnson, about that this is this R four is where schools can really shine and they, and they always have. And so I wondered about that theme that we've been carrying with us now for months, that when you bring in coherent governance, it doesn't mean that it ushers in, you know, this whole wave of new initiatives and more activities and more measurement. You know, how can you capitalize on what you are, are already doing? I really thought about that for R four. And, you know, Langlet Commissioner Zer has said, how much of this, you know, it's it's in the core, it's already universal, tier one, it's embedded, or it should be. Because this R four, just as is, it reads to me as more about extras. And so I, I was actually looking to sort of you know, like, if anything, reduce the number of indicators and just go with that you would see it everywhere. I mean, it's mentioned in social sciences and language, like, our our, um, four point one, for example, indicator two. You know, the core is there, social studies, languages, but isn't all of R four in English and art classes and music classes and the games we play in FIAED? You know, school-wide celebrations and the books that should overflow from our libraries and, you know, so on. So that's the feeling I really had quite strongly about this one.
So I think of the, the, the three commissioners that have spoken so far, I think the universal thing, and it comes down for me too, is that vision? Is the, like, how can we embrace this? Because this is, as we talk amongst ourselves, the real things that we want our schools to produce. Obviously, we, we are required by the state to focus on academic achievement, and there is something to be studied. You can't participate in society effectively without reading and writing, without an understanding of history or an understanding of the scientific process and critical thinking. But I think that we are, we need to show more. And again, it gets to that outcomes, right, that, you know, like, yeah, let's include what are, what are some of the projects that the Gay Street Alliance is doing that's getting out, you know, what are some of the ways that our Mong cultural club? I know it, you know, we've had at our, at our board meeting, some of our Mong students come in and share, you know, a traditional dance. That that's impacting the people that are here for that. It's obviously impacting us, but then everybody that's watching, I mean, what are, what are some of those outcomes? And impacts. I think that gets, to me, in, in for four, uh, one of the places that there was quite a bit going on, and again, you know, these are in the extras, and I think where there is, we do need to focus on, how are we infusing these things? How, how does it get infused? And where do we find those things that are already there to bring forward throughout the curriculum? I think one of the things that I, I, I noted was just, you know, some of the things that are missing are, are some of, some of them are here. And I think there could be more, but there are, you know, there are just student efforts that get at creating positive change and contributing to a thriving community and acting social justice. And I'm, my, uh, Ukraine rubber band wristband that a class of fourth graders at Locust Lane made, and they said, we want, you know, I think they got very excited about getting a rainbow loom. And they wanted to find a way to use it, but they decided to, you know, make these rubber band wristbands and offer them to people for three bucks. They're using the money and they're donating it to UNICEF to help people in Ukraine. I mean, that is students in our schools working for the betterment of our community. That, that's, and it's bringing that vision throughout, like, they don't get that to that point. At least in part, they aren't supported in that, by that fourth grade teacher in that classroom. To say, you know, to infuse their teaching with these values, with this utopian ideal. And we, obviously, we don't, we don't get to utopia. But we are, we want to be making that reasonable progress. I think another place where I found that the vision was lacking continues to be in four point five, students will understand and display ethical behavior. We talked in the first draft about that it can't just be about avoiding negative consequences or not getting referred to the office. That displaying ethical behavior is larger than that, and it is as a, we need to focus on positive aspects or abilities to show ethical behavior in a positive way rather than anyway, I think there are places that we probably do that as well. I just want to challenge Superintendent, you, you Superintendent Johnson, I want to challenge the administration to, to, to dream here. And I, just drawing off of my experience as someone who went into the teaching profession, but I hope that it is somewhat universal for all of us that are, that are, all of you that are still working in it, that you, you have this vision of what would the utopia, and what would the ideal school system be? You know, how can we move towards these greater ideals? I think some of, some people probably do get into, you know, teaching economics because they love economics and want to share that love. But I think a lot of people get into teaching because they love kids. And they want to share and help develop children to be best kids that they can be, the best people they can be, the, the best members of our society that they can be. So I think, you know, I wanted, if, if we move this one back as well, I want to challenge this vision to be bigger and to not be constrained by what, that's what we have, but where do we want to go? And that doesn't mean pulling in a bunch more indicators. It doesn't mean developing a bunch necessarily more. But it means, how do we express? I think the board has tried to express in this one the vision as best we can make it of our community for what we want for our students. And I, I want to see the administration say, how do we take this then and, and express this in our schools? And how can we share back what we're already doing? Because we see that in the impact in so many kids' lives. So I, I think that, again, that, that vision, getting it to every kid. You know, we, we do have some extras here. I'd like to know how many kids are participating in a lot of these extras. But how do we get it? Where is it in our English class? Where is it in our science class? Where is it in our libraries? We know that it's there. We just need to see it here.
So are we considering the same motion as we did?
I, I mean, it seems reasonable to me because I think I'd like to see this come back with a picture personally. So I, I would, I would hear that motion, but we can do, no. We can accept it, we can reject it, we can modify it, we can move it back. It's, it's whatever the will of the board is.
I make a motion to reconsider R four, uh, September 12th board meeting.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. So we'll look forward to having that back on September 12th if there are any, as we work on, you know, the next year's calendar. If there are additional changes, we'll just bring that forward as then, and we'll make a note of that for the board when we consider the full calendar for the year. Uh, this time, we'll move on to our last main agenda item of the evening, which is uh, matters reserved for board action. Tonight, we'll have an informational session about the job description and labor market review for both twelve-month and certified employees. I see Kate is ready to go on that. We'll we will not be taking action tonight. We will save that for, uh, our next meeting or a future meeting, depending on a conversation. So Kate, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, tonight, we're gonna talk, as President Arden said, about the job description and labor market review process. And so, um, the purpose of the policy that you see before you, policy five thirteen, um, job description, labor market review. Um, the purpose of this is to assure that the district has an equitable process in place to review both the job description as well as the salary grade placement for each position that we have within the district. This process ensures that the district's salary schedule won't fall behind in the labor market. Um, and thus creates a situation which positions are impossible to fill, that the salary schedules are out of line with the qualifications, duties and expectations of the position. Review of each position is, we've got it on a five-year rotating cycle. The two thousand nineteen, twenty school year was the first year that we conducted this review with any of the financial modifications that were to occur happening in July first of the two thousand twenty school year. That's how it was supposed to happen. However, um, as you know, due to the pandemic, um, that pushed us back almost a full year. So if you recall, last April, so nearly a year ago, um, we were before you presenting the same information. And at that point in time, the information that the board approved um, for the employees that were, um, having their positions reviewed at that point in time, anybody who received a salary grade modification for, um, the information that was before the board, their, um, retro payments went back to the July before them as well. Um, so what we're doing tonight is no different than what we did a year ago. Um, but rest assured, we're making progress and we're about to be on schedule. So, um, tonight, we're gonna be doing similar things with the twelve-month hourly salary schedule. Um, so any modifications that the board would be making, um, as Tim said, at the next school board meeting would go into effect, um, all the way back to July one of two thousand twenty-one. Um, but like I indicated, this is the last year that will be behind schedule and playing catch-up due to the pandemic. So going forward, we will be on schedule, um, for the policy timeline. So moving forward to the twelve-month hourly positions, which are year two of the, um, of the five thirteen policy. This is an example of what, um, the hourly salary schedule looks like for twelve-month hourly positions. So as you can see in the sample, um, it's just a listing of the positions, um, some of the sample, sample, it's a sample listing of some of the positions, excuse me, um, and what the salary schedule looks like. You can see that there's a salary grade associated with each one of the positions. Um, and then, um, just level A placement, um, on the salary schedule as of July one of two thousand twenty-one. So this is a current listing of salary grades and, um, level A compensation for each one of those positions. You can see that, uh, for the positions that are on the sample before you, that there's a salary grade assignment of anywhere from level five to a level twelve. So the process that's included in, um, policy five thirteen involves um, starting with the job description updates. And what we do when we update the job descriptions is we receive input from all the employees that are in the positions. Um, an email goes out to the people who are involved in those positions at the point in time that we solicit the input. We take, um, input from the supervisors who oversee the people in those positions. And then we work to make any modifications that are necessary at that point in time. We share the job descriptions and the salary grade information with our third-party vendor, um, who at this, um, point in time happens to be CBIZ. Um, they compare the job descriptions to similar job descriptions across a variety of different industries. They determine salaries that are comparable for jobs using hundreds of reliable salary surveys. This is all of their proprietary information. They age that data to make sure that there's, um, accuracy for the present date. And then they make recommendations to us based upon what salary grade placement any modifications should be made to. We use the information that they provide to us, and then we take that and we compare it to our internal structure. So, um, any recommendations that come forward from CBIZ, we, um, use that to internally review, um, current job descriptions. If somebody's recommended to move to a higher salary grade, we then take that new recommendation and compare it to, um, that higher level salary grade job descriptions to make sure that it isn't creating an inaccuracy or, um, inequitable measurement of that new salary grade. We conduct comparisons, um, for the position responsibilities to ensure that everything is placed at an accurate level. And when we evaluate all the recommendations individually, each one of the recommendations that CBIZ makes to us, we do each one of those individually internally to make sure that we're, um, not creating inequities within our own structure after they make recommendations to us with the new modifications. So what you see before you here is the list of the year two, um, So what you see before you here is the list of the year two, um, job descriptions that were reviewed. Um, and this is taken right out of the link that's in the employee handbook, um, online. So these were all of the job descriptions, again, that nearly a year ago, we started working on the process. Um, and then wound up sending the C-Biz within the process to have them updated, um, and modified if necessary. So the salary grade, oops, let me go back for a second. Um, on this list of job descriptions, there is a total 46 job descriptions that we actually worked through the process that I had just gotten done describing to you. Of those 46 job descriptions, um, we wound up having 32 of them that are being recommended for a salary grade modification. So out of the 46 that we reviewed and updated job descriptions, 46 wound up having a salary grade modification based upon the process and working with C-Biz, um, to move through policy 513. So with that, um, you can see here that of the 32 positions that were recommended for the modification, there's a total of 130 FTE that are affected by that. Uh, each position that's recommended receive a salary grade level increase, um, is moving one salary grade. Um, last year, I think there were a couple of positions that had a recommendation to move two because they had fallen so far behind. This year, there's, um, no more than one salary grade change that's being recommended. The total annual increase for wages equals $363,055 and 60, uh, sorry, 56 cents. However, you can see that two of those positions are starred and, um, placed in italics. Both of those positions are part of the food nutrition department. And, uh, each of those are accounted for in Fund 50 rather than Fund 10. It's part of our district's operating budget. Um, and so the overall impact to the operating budget is $355,161. So you can see on the bottom there, the, what the total is to the district's operating budget. Um, because that nearly, what is it, close to, uh, probably $7,900 gets pulled out and, um, comes out of Fund 50 because it's out of a different budget. Um, so the grand total, um, of the salary modifications is right below the bolded number there. When we take that and combine it, uh, the salary increase with the benefits, you can see that, um, if the board were to approve the administration's recommendation for those, um, modifications and combine it with the benefits, the overall total for the, um, Fund 10 increase is going to be just over, uh, $409,500. And you can see there that the Fund 50 increase is going to be just over the $9,000 um, because of the two positions that are, um, coming from the food nutrition budget. Um, as a reminder, this increase is for our current school year. And if approved by the board at the next board meeting, the affected employees would receive retro payments back to July 1 of 2021. Because this is what would have happened at this point in time last school year. And the employees would have received increases in their salary grade for this current school year. Um, so, um, my question, I think at this point, unless President already wanted to do it differently, would we need to see if there's any questions about this part of the presentation before I move on to the certified piece?
Perfect. Questions for Kate? That could be good.
If you could talk a little bit about custodial. That specifically, um, hiring, hiring and retention, and that would be one position that I would think we might have seen some kind of significant shift in sort of the, like, sort of pre-COVID, post-COVID. So, can you speak to that? Like I said, I, I, yeah.
So if I move to this one, I mean, if any.
Everybody, you know, but it, it, there's a, you know, a group here that really has been highlighted. Uh, which changes COVID, I would think custodial.
So, um, what we wound up doing here with the custodial positions, um, was modifying a little bit of what, um, one of the recommendations that came from C-Biz was, um, doing away with the, the shift differentials and moving everybody to, um, like taking third shift and making that the first shift, um, salary. Then doing away with the shift differentials, which, you know, you did not feel would work in, in our organization. There's clearly a difference between people wanting to work first, first shift, second shift, third shift. And so we really felt that we needed to keep that differentiation between the, the payments for the three different shifts. And so we did take the recommendation of, um, moving the payment for third shift to first shift. Um, and then went ahead and created, um, what used to be the same. Well, we kept the same differential between the three shifts, but just went ahead and moved the third shift to first shift and then keep that, added the differential between those three. So it did increase each one of those by either the 24 or the 25 cents, depending on the shift. Um, so it increased each of those, um, but we did not do away with, you know, the shift differential between all of them. Um, and then in terms of the, the retention and, um, retaining, um, positions, we don't, we don't lose a lot of custodians. It, you know, when we do, it's, it's usually because of retirements. Um, but I think that once we, once we get people here, then they stay. Oftentimes it's, it's the attracting part. But the retention part, I think, is pretty strong. So, um, I think the, the part of that, that we needed to make sure that we were doing was not making things more challenging and creating other internal inequities by bumping positions that had, um, a different internal requirement and, uh, related to duties and responsibilities to other positions at, um, any, or an equal or lower salary grade. So that's why we went with the recommendation that we have before you.
Pusher Lance.
Kind of a follow-up on, on that and the internal equity. For the custodians, um, are we only adjusting those custodians at the lower level of the salary range? So if a custodian had been here 10 to 15 years, would there be compression that's experienced by the lower tier uh, experiencing a, a salary adjustment that would move them, uh, closer to the mid-tier or the upper range?
The, what you see for the, um, salary grade, um, recommendations goes across the entire grid. So, so it doesn't, it's not like, depending on where you are across the grid, it, it's the same.
Is that the case for all of those positions? Okay, so if there's, um, an FTE where there's only one person in that range, that's the only individual in that job description?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so then moving on to the certified, um, salary compensation. This is year three. This is how we get caught up for next year so that we're not having to backdate and provide retro payments to anybody. So this year we also looked at the certified salary schedules. And, um, what we did with this piece was, um, obviously, we've been talking a little bit about the fact that we've been behind, um, due to the pandemic. And we were able to catch up this year by doing both this, uh, year two and year three. When we got to the piece about ECASD, um, the review of the certified salary schedule included two specific pieces that we looked at. Um, one has been near and dear to administration of the district since the creation of the salary schedule back in 2016 when it was implemented. And those components, um, have always been the beginning of the bachelor's and the master's salary schedule. So that's always been something that administration has been adamant about. And that's making sure that we have a competitive wage at the beginning of the BA and MA salary schedule. And that's been obviously for, you know, um, attracting staff to our, our district. And then everything on the salary schedule is built upon that. So then retaining people obviously has, um, a big part to do with having a competitive wage at those beginning pieces. Then the other component that's included in, in what we looked at was what you see before you on the screen. And that's what C-Biz has recommended all the way back to 2016 when our new salary schedules went into place. And that's making sure that, um, in an attempt to be able to attract and retain, that we're making sure that the minimum midpoint and maximum of the salary, salary ranges remain market competitive. So those were the two pieces that we looked at when we did the comparison for, um, our certified salary schedule. And each had a very specific point in what it was that we were looking for when we reviewed all of this. So, um, with those two components in, in mind as our focus, the first thing that we looked at was the BA and MA wages in our local districts, in the Big Rivers Conference, in communities with UW campuses, and the districts that were originally part of the, um, cohorts that we used to create the salary schedule, um, model back in 2016. So those were the cohorts that we looked at when we went ahead and, um, reviewed this information. And those are, um, comparable district cohorts that we look at for a multitude of things, um, each year. So as we review each of these, you'll notice that the data reflects, um, several of the cohorts listed. That's ECSD showing that, um, we're in the top two-thirds of the districts with the highest BA and MA, um, as a starting wage. So in each one of these, you'll see that, uh, ECSD is in our typical, um, ECSD blue color. And for the most part, uh, all the other districts always remain the same color. I can see on the screen there that the tripla and monominee have very similar colors on your screen, although in mine, it's very different. So, but, um, tripla will always be the very first one and monominee, um, is almost always the next one after that. So.
It's entry level?
Um, yes, this is, yep, BA is, is on your left and MA is on the, is on the right. So bachelors and masters. Um, so this data before you here is, um, within the BRC or the Big Rivers Conference. Um, you can see here that the two districts that surpass us are districts that in many of the cases are competing with Minnesota schools for quality, um, candidates in their location. And, um, that's mostly due to the fact that they're close to the Minnesota border. This next one is, um, only the bachelors, um, just because we couldn't fit it all on one screen. But this is the bachelors for, um, communities that have a UW campus in them. And you can see here that there's four districts that are larger than us, have a, a higher wage than us for starting bachelors. And then when we move to the match, the masters for the same cohort, you can see that there are five districts that have a starting wage for masters that's higher than us. However, um, it's not by much. So if you look at Eau Claire there, again, kind of right in the middle, and Madison is in the pink just to the right. The difference between the two districts is $138. So although it shows that Madison is higher than us, again, it's not very, by very much. Um, so the ranges, although the, like I said, there's five schools that are, um, higher than us with a starting master's degree. Those ranges are not significant, of course, until you get to the lacrosse, which is the green one, um, way over on the right. When we move, move to the labor market cohort, so these are the schools that were looked at in comparisons when we created the new compensation model. The BA, uh, which is the one you're looking at now. For this one, our district is pretty much right in the middle, um, similar to Wausau, Green Bay, Sheboygan. Um, everybody's pretty much all in the same area, um, and for the most part, within just a few dollars of one another. But then when we move to the, excuse me, the masters cohort for this group. Again, here, here you can see that there's, um, we're pretty much in the middle. Um, but what's significant about, um, this piece when we went through and we looked at all the districts is that Eau Claire is one of the very few districts that has a significant difference between, um, their bachelor's salary schedule and their master's salary schedule. So for our staff, once they receive their masters, there's a $4,000 difference between our BA and our MA. Where the majority of other districts, it's 2,000, maybe 3,000. Um, so for our, for our salary schedule, it is a, it's a $4,000 jump from BA to MA. And that's one of the highest out of all of those cohorts. So that was one of the things that really stood out for us. Now we get into the slides that had to do with the recommendations from C-Biz, which was looking at the minimum midpoint maximum of the salary ranges, um, to make sure that we're remaining market competitive. So what you're looking at here is the green is the average of the salaries for the Big Rivers Conference. And what you see in the blue is the ECASD actual salary from the minimum, the midpoint, and the maximum of each salary schedule for the bachelors, and then the masters is on the right. So you can see that our actual for each of those measurement points exceeds the average salaries in the Big Rivers Conference for each one of those measurement points. Again, when we look at the cohort of the communities that have a UW campus, um, located within them, very similar in that the green is the average for all of those, with the blue being our district's actual. And again, each one of the minimum midpoint maximum, our actual is exceeding each of those districts averages. And then the final one, which is the labor market review, which is again, is the most, um, significant of all of the measurement points because this is how we developed our schedule to begin with. Um, here's the only area where our district falls short of that. And you can see that that's in the minimum area of the masters category. Um, and here we fall short by $275. So the average is, um, $275 more than what our actual is at the minimum of the masters um, salary schedule. Um, however, uh, by the time that our masters-level staff reached the midpoint and the maximum of, of the salary schedule, um, our staff exceed the average salaries by nearly 2,000 at the midpoint and just over 4,200 at the maximum. So out of the 18 measurement points, um, in this component of, of what we looked at, our district exceeds the average in 17 out of those 18 measurement points. So based on the review conducted, um, there, there are not any, um, modifications being recommended to the salary schedule for, um, our certified salary, salary schedule. So questions on, on this one?
Johnson.
Yeah, could you, could you speak to, uh, any of those tables from C-Biz, uh, minimum, midpoint, maximum? Can you give me what's the, uh, what's the step adjustment where that number aligns with, like within? So where, where are they at? Like a number, uh, uh, number of years and steps to be at that quote unquote, like that average? Do we, like, how, 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 how would that, what would that look like? So to be able to, let's say slide number 20, uh, uh, master average salary, 64, 264. What, what, what step is that? Like, so where, where, where would you be? Do you, do you, do you kind of have, uh, kind of have an, have an idea? Do you, do you, do you kind of have, uh, kind of have an, have an idea what step where you would be and?
You're talking so like on, on this one here.
Yes. Oh, yeah. On, 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 like where, where would that be using our salary schedule? How it's set up, it would be which step in like, where, 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 where are they like to be able to get there?
Abby, level O. Thank you. That would be masters level O.
Masters level O. And then, uh, the follow, what's the, to get the masters level O, what's the overall teaching experience there? So do, do we have that? So that would be masters level O is. What's the, the teaching experience piece? Or is it just you, you're having a masters?
Well, say that back in the old way of doing things, um, it would have been if you went year by year, it would be how whatever letter O is, you know? Yes, thank you. Um, that's what you would have correlated it to is each year, if you would have moved on a salary schedule, it would have been fifteen years if that's what it came to. Thank you, Erica. But again, that would have been, you know, back prior to the new salary schedule where, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily work that way anymore because it's not based on years of experience. But ballpark, it would be safe to say that it's, it's certainly like level O certainly isn't a beginning level teacher.
But the, the way that, oh.
Yeah, the floor is yours.
So there is, uh, uh, the, you know, that, like, in the new way of, 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 of doing this, that level O allows for fluctuation of the teaching experience piece. That's, so that's kind of what you're saying. So you could potentially, there would be that fluctuation in the, the, the teaching experience piece. Who ends up at level O, right? In the new, and it, it, was that part of the CBIS thing? Or was that something that, uh, that was part of the?
That's part of ours, that's part of our new system. Um, and I mean, CBIS takes it to, takes CBIS, the CBIS process takes in account years of experience. Um, but doesn't do exactly what we just described. Like level O wouldn't necessarily equate to fifteen years of experience.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Questions, sir?
Um, so I have a question. So there is a, there's an end on that salary schedule, correct? There's like a reach level, what, Abby?
Chief for bachelors and wife for masters.
And that could be at level or at like, you know, what, twenty years in?
Thirty?
Like somewhere in between. So then you're kind of stagnant, right? Like, once you reach that top level, you're kind of stagnant. Am I understanding that at that point in time, the only increase you would receive would be a CPI? Okay. So, uh, and that's represented here in these kind of like right columns, right? The mac, the maximum is that end level salary.
Correct, right? The maximum. Yep.
Okay. Um, you guys do this for the hourly? Like, can you see this data? Because I'm, I'm curious about that, that end cap. That, like, like this is really helpful for me when it comes to, and, oh, and clarification. But this is pre CPI this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, but have you guys ever, has CBIS ever put something like this together for you for positions in those same districts? For like custodial or food and nutrition?
Um, no, um, but I think that what you're probably, Abby, do you think that, like, the level thirteen piece is probably what Erica's talking about? Okay, that's what I figured. Um, so on what we presented for the hourly piece at the beginning, one of the recommendations was for maintenance two positions to move from a level twelve to a level thirteen. And on our current salary structure, there is no level thirteen. But the recommendation from CBIS was to create a level thirteen because maintenance two positions are, are, there's like four of them, the plumber, the electrician, the, um, thank you, HVAC. Um, so these are, you know, like our journeyman positions that, um, when you do the comparisons. Yeah, sure. Outside of education, the, the compensation is, you know, I mean, you, you know where things are like in the labor market right now. And so our salary structure at level twelve is like what you're talking about. You know, it, we would have been very, our salary structure didn't, the highest level, even with CPI, like sitting there with CPI each year wasn't going to accommodate the level of compensation needed for those positions. So we needed to create a new level.
Yeah. But that, so that would come, so for certified staff, that would come kind of the same way. If they needed to create a new level, like if you guys, if you started to fall behind in that upper tier.
Right.
Then you would cre, you would create a new level, correct?
Yep. But as you can, like, yeah, I, I think that at least as it currently stands in the comparisons.
CBIS kind of does that then for the hourly positions. And so if, if I had a question from staff member that if, you know, like if ever there was a recommendation that this certain position was at the top end, right? After twenty-five years or whatever, was no longer competitive with neighboring districts. They would recommend that for a new, new categories or new steps, whatever.
Levels, levels, levels.
How late is it? The, yeah, to be created, that, that's how it would work.
Mm-hmm. Now, that's not to say that if Altoona as a neighboring district had a level that was higher than ours, that we would say, oh, we need to create a new, a new level or in terms of a large mass comparison.
Falling way behind that type of.
Yep. If it was back in twenty fifteen, before we implemented the new salary schedule and we were falling behind in comparison to everybody, that would be different. But one school having something higher than ours? No.
Representative Logan?
Within the Big Rivers Conference, is the salary plus benefits knowable?
And the Big Rivers Conference is what?
Are you able, these numbers include benefits?
No, this is just, this is just salary or wages.
Okay. Are the benefits knowable for the other districts?
Um, benefits is a very, um, the, benefits are a very, um, what's the word I want to say? Um, everybody's benefit package is very specific to their own district and what's offered in their community. Um, and so once you get into the benefits piece, everything changes dramatically. And a lot of that goes back to, you know, whatever was bargained, you know, prior to Act Ten. And then what districts did or didn't do with that as soon as Act Ten went away. Um, so some districts changed things as soon as they had the opportunity. Um, and other districts held on to things, you know, all the way up to current. And so, um, the ability to compare that piece is almost impossible.
So your rationale is that because benefits vary so widely from district to district that the value of one benefit at a certain district isn't necessarily equivalent to the value of a benefit at another district?
Um, the benefit packages in each community are very hard to, it, it's very hard to compare apples to apples. And when we, even when we look at what the state does in terms of comparisons, we always wind up looking very different in our area of the state because it's very, benefits in our area are extremely, extremely expensive. Um, and so when you add that into the pot, um, in terms of a full picture with the salary piece, it, it skews things when you compare that to other areas of the state because our benefits aren't the same value as benefits in the southern part of the state. If you put that together in a package and compare them as apples and apples, it isn't apples and apples. Because a knee replacement in Eau Claire is not the same as a knee replacement in Milwaukee. So when you try to compare those and then add it to the salary, um, it's very different. So it skews what the package would be for that employee between those two communities.
Uh, Dr. Lafferty, your light is just on from before, right? But yes, Commissioner Lyons, go ahead.
Uh, nice presentation, Kay, and accolades to everyone that keeps an eye on this. Um, I think that it's superintendent and HR's responsibility really to make sure that salaries in a, in a district are market appropriate. And somebody's got to track this and somebody's got to, to keep an attention on it. The one part that, um, just bothers me a little bit is that on the board agenda action item, it, it asks the question, does it fit into the budget? And the answer on that is no. And the way I look at this as a board, we really ought to press that no to be a yes. And it can be a yes if what we do is we're taking the anticipated twenty-two, twenty-three budget with the anticipated revenues and the anticipated expenses. And, and we decide where the choices are in next year's budget and what, and how we're going to do this. And I understand that, that, the, the, the back, um, I understand the, the rationale of, of backdating. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I understand it. Um, and I understand too that that can be picked up by reserves and or loose, um, un, un, unspent supply dollars, um, because it's one-time money. But this isn't one-time money. This is a, this is a base commitment that is salary and benefits that will go on for some time. And I remember the same unease the last time we did this. And again, it was fits into the budget, no. And I remember just being uneasy, how, how can, how can I as a board member pass something that's such a large ticket item when it doesn't, when I'm acknowledging that it doesn't fit into the budget? So I'd like to challenge, um, to change that for the, the actual vote that's upcoming. And I don't know if, if the action item can be done. Um, but I'd like to see that we've, we've at least planned for this in the next year's budget and how it might impact expense.
Lucine, oh, go ahead, Dr. B.
Yeah, I just probably, this is kind of basic and especially those that have like hung in with us for this late at night. This is a knowledgeable crowd here, so I'm probably not saying anything you don't already know. But just very thankful to Kay and to Abby for providing these kinds of data to us that we, this is not the first time we've seen these comparisons. They're available when we're in closed session and it helps us engage in good decision-making when we're going forward with a choice about like CPI, for example, that how committed, um, you know, that we are to remaining competitive. We want to lead the pack on all those measures. If you're talking about Big Rivers Conference or local or whatnot. Um, and that's not just being competitive with, um, you know, what's available at other school districts, but in the supply and demand for, you know, outside of education that we know it's, it's a rather dire picture when you project forward. So just us be, being able to remain competitive. So I'm thankful to have this information, but we all.
So what else I think, bring it in? All right. Uh, I will also just add my thanks work. Uh, I have a question for the board on where we would like to place this at our, our next meeting. We will have the opportunity to vote on such a thing. And I'm going to ask you directly, Commissioner Lyons first, and then I'll take everybody. Um, because you've expressed some, some reservation about it. Uh, would you support us putting it on consent for the recommendations? Or would you like it as an individual item to be able to discuss? And then if, we'll go from there.
I, I would vote for it on consent if we can change that fits into the budget to a yes.
Okay. So then I will first ask the rest of the board how they feel about be fine on consent? Or would you rather have it as an individual item?
I, I, I would like to, I, I myself would like to have it as an individual item. And then, uh, Commissioner Lyons bringing that up as a, as a change that we'd like to make and then.
Okay. So we'll just put it as an individual item reserved for board action. We'll have a little discussion about one meet, next meeting or the second meeting in May, I guess. So, you know, Abby, you have a chance to consider what that looks like. I don't know what it looks like and I'm not going to put you on the spot right now. But we, we can have discussion about that in agenda setting tomorrow. But we will have it as a, as an individual item reserved for board, uh, action at a future meeting then. So thank you, Kay. Thank you, Abby. Thank you, everyone for that work. All right. This time we'll move into our board debrief. One item that you feel that we have done well as a board tonight. Papan and I will send it over to Commissioner Lyons to lead us through that.
All right. Um, so the debrief, uh, we will start, um, am I right with Commissioner Zer?
Well, I thought we handled the results. Um, well, I think that it, that's the first time we've really like had to uh, reconsider, I mean, like hardly consider approval and, and ask for, for more. And I think that, um, I don't know. I think it was also the challenge of the evening was how, you know, it, the tremendous amount of work that is done and that we know is being done in the district. And it feels somehow like, I don't want to ever feel like, like we're not grateful for that work or, you know, or, or like we don't trust that it's being done. Um, I just think it, it, it's a balancing act of, you know, of accountability and responsibility that we have and, and especially in those results policies. And I think we can build it well tonight, um, as hopefully as a team. And we're going to get to the, the place that we want to be with it. And I think that Commissioner Lyons was really great in that last one, in that individually considered item there. His expertise just came right out. I think he did a great job.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, you know, I think for me, uh, what we did well, as I'm looking through, I think I will go, uh, governance culture, uh, G two, uh, one, the board's major focus will be on student results rather than on the choice of students made by, and, you know, I think moving things back a little bit to ensure that we can interpret those particular, uh, results and, and make a good decision. So I, I think we did, uh, did that well. And, uh, the first time in a while, I'll just end on a, a positive and not talk about anything. Thank you.
Commissioner Clements?
I also think that we handle results policy monitoring reports in a, I think a, a measured way. Um, I don't know if it's an appropriate way to describe it, but it, but it, it kind of a mature educated way to, to describe what it is that we've liked and things that we didn't like. And recognize how do we arrive at the solution we're looking for rather than, um, you know, rather than, than spend too much time being hung up on the specifics of things that we perhaps didn't like about it. Uh, and if, I, although it was a difficult to muddle through, I, I felt, and thus far feel better about how it went because we feel like we're having to work at it to, to make the monitoring reports mean what we expect them to, to mean, uh, to all of us in the future. Um, and doing the hard working in getting there. I think if it were, if it were easy, I'd be, I'd be, frankly, I'd be concerned at especially this early in the process that we're checking the boxes and we're going along. And, um, I, I don't think that that was, that would be a fair expectation. So I'm happy that we're, we're. So I'm happy that we're, we're digging into it and hopefully providing feedback to how those will be as, as meaningful as we need them to be to show the growth that we expect. Happy that we're doing the hard work in that regard.
Commissioner Pika.
Yeah, I, I appreciate moving that R3 and R4 ahead. That's a great opportunity for us. As a challenge, I've been thinking a lot like over the past several months. One of the, there have been many, many challenges. One of the, one of the many difficult pieces is the amount of misinformation that's circulated. And I, I'm now thinking quite a bit about what can we do, you know, during meetings? It's always sort of straddling that, you know, this is a business meeting. Could we do better in terms of providing educational pieces? You can't stop the flow of misinformation, but you can help maybe in small ways. So how could we, can we bring in educational pieces that get the, more of the accuracy out there? So trying to get along in that direction and could we do better?
One of the things that I thought went exceedingly well tonight was the hiring of Danyang. I think he's a perfect person. I got to work with him at Stout, and I think that was a great hire. And congratulations. Area for improvement, I need to be more prepared to take notes. It was wonderful conversation today, and I hope I captured it all. I really rely on commissioners like the educators here to, on, on student learning outcomes, it's a bit lost on me sometimes, so. Good meeting. And President Bourdey.
So I also appreciate that we, you know, looked at some of our options. And I, I do remember which of you it was that said, we're not ever looking at this as, you know, and I said this to you earlier, this is not a rejection of the work. It is realizing that as a group, I think we did a good job of realizing what we had done through the first draft had not provided you the, the platform to, to give us everything that we needed. And there are certainly things that maybe, you know, that we did ask, you know, like, so it was, it's not a, it's not a blame. It's not a, it is a realizing, we need to make sure that we do this work as seriously as possible because the results for our students are our number one concern. And I, I believe they're the number one concern of just about everybody in this room. And so I echo what everybody else said as a positive. I think continuing to work on, trying to make sure that we have that information and, and those questions and that, so that, you know, I, I, I came in, not sure how I felt about everything, but realizing I also, you know, I don't know that you necessarily knew, you know, some of that feedback ahead of time. So I maybe personally was not as prepared. Am I, not an excuse, but maybe an explanation. My in-laws were in town for the long weekend. And so when I had the packet, I was busy playing cards with my father-in-law. Maybe this is an excuse and not building up my questions earlier, as early as I perhaps should have, could have. I do want to continue to, to commit to making sure that I have all of that as early as possible so I can, I can feed that back to you. And I, that's, you know, more of a personal area of growth that I need to make sure lock out that time, even when I know that I'll have some other conflicts so that I can do the best job that I can for all of the work here. You, Commissioner Lyons. At this time, I would hear motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.